I think I heard 58.
Yes.
And then, um, okay, then the others are after 107. That's fine. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other requests by individual council members who have a motion on the omnibus? Do we get a second? We need a second. We have a second roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Did the motion pass? What was the vote?
Seven, zero. Eight, zero now.
Now, eight, zero with Valenzuela.
Who are, is Councilman Pastor?
She voted for Pastor.
Councilman Waring was not here. I said I was going to hold the meeting for 15 minutes and I probably started a little earlier than that. I want to make sure Councilman Waring has a chance to vote. I know he asked for some individual votes on these items. I think he'll be back any moment or momentarily. There he is. All right. He's back in the room. Okay. Item 26 is a proposed contract with Dickinson Wright for legal services. Do we have a motion on 26? Vice Mayor.
Move approval.
Your motion. We have a second. Any cards on that item? Questions or comments from members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. That item passes on a six to two vote before this city council. Next item is the payment ordinance, item 27. Vice Mayor.
So I believe we have cards on the entire payment ordinance and then two separate items specifically. So move approval of item 27 except item P and T.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Barker, did you wish to provide testimony on item 27, our payment ordinance, followed by Mr. Rusnick, followed by Mr. Vint? Ms. Barker, good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Twenty-seven, it's over to $7 million for various payments and three caught my eye, they're environmental. And it is, all of this is our public money and my point is that when we do this, we're paying not only the state, the county, and the federal government in regards to environmental services. And when we do this, it's like even when we go out to get counsel, in counsel or outside counsel, you know, to, which sometimes protects performance or non-performance, we expect also that the law will be followed here at the city. And I want to bring that up. First of all, it's, Al, Mr. Rusnick, it doesn't have anything to do with an argument with the neighbor. It has to do with the city doing its job on the ordinance. And in his case, it's state law and it's environmental. My point is, is there's enforcement that needs to come now out of the county because that's their job to oversee the city when the law isn't being upheld in, on that property. Okay? And so I'm just making this neutral statement.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. Mr. Rusnick?
Is hundred eighty-six thousand dollars to Arizona State. They have another seventy-six thousand to Maricopa County. Federal government, fifty thousand. The thing is, is they don't do their job as the ordinance states. State's ordinance, county ordinance, city ordinance, they don't do it. So what we need is somebody to come in and say, hey, we're going to follow the Clean Air Act. The Clean Air Act is not being, you just ignore the Clean Air Act. And now, Sal, you said it was one-inch rock. It wasn't one-inch rock. The one-inch rock was taken up. Now there's half-inch rock. Now there's half-inch rock. Yeah. Three, now it's half-inch. So this is what I wanted to tell it. The thing is, everybody's in bed with everybody. The environmental quality, Arizona State, Maricopa County, and they're just all in bed together and paying the money off. So they stick together and don't do nothing for the people that need it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rusnick. Mr. Vint, you wish to testify on our payment ordinance, item number 27? Please, now's the time.
Yes, I hope this mic is working. I'd like to help the gentleman that was just here putting new batteries and things in it. If people would learn how to speak into a microphone like I'm doing right now, every one of you should do that. He can control it very easy. But when you're talking, he can't control that. So anyway, getting to this item. The city of Phoenix is going to have to start hiring somebody that's got responsibility. Looked like Ed Zirker went for a trip, but, oh, goddamn, he's back. He'll listen, maybe. But you're going to have to get after somebody, Ed, because up in my neighborhood and on my particular property, they came out and said there's dust on the side of a mountain. There's no dust on the side of a mountain. All there is is rocks. That's why we have valleys.
All right, Mr. Vint, you've got to keep it on the item. The item at hand is the proposed payment ordinance and by law, you have to, you were required to talk on the item. So you've got to relate what you're saying to the particular item.
I am talking on the item. Environmental, isn't that something to do with this item?
I think in light of what you're saying, that would be a liberal stretch, but go ahead, proceed, and we'll see where it goes.
Now, you used up four minutes of my three-minute time. So anyway, we're going to have to get together here and get somebody out to do something right. And you've never fired, no, you did fire two city employees. One that tried to protect the water system years ago when they shut down all the water purification deals in the city and then it rained like hell and mud rolled in. So a wonderful gentleman that worked for the city said, well, boil your water and maybe it'll protect you, it won't kill you. Well, it didn't work out that way, so they fired him. And then another situation where two city employees, a male and female, got together. That's not legal.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Vint. I'll give you 10 more seconds.
Okay, I'll get back to where the problem is. Up on the side of my hill where I live, had to put 70 tons, I think it was, it's been a while back, the wrong size. And that doesn't matter, you know, to hell with you. But I'm not going to lay down and let this happen to me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vint, for your testimony.
And I'm glad that the police are here today because they're protecting you as much as.
Mr. Vint, thank you very much for your testimony. Appreciate it. So now the motion is in favor of item number 27, holding out 27P and T. There is a motion. There is a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is 27P. Do we have a motion on 27P?
Move approval of 27P.
We have a motion. We have a second. Are there any cards on that item? Any comments by members of our council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes on a seven to two vote. Next item is 27T. Do we have a motion on 27T?
Move approval of 27T.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Cards on that item? Comments or questions by this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. 27T passes seven to two before this city council. Okay, next item on the agenda, oh, Councilwoman Williams, please.
I said number 90. I should have said 99. So could we take 99 out and put 90 in?
Okay. So earlier, we had held out number 90, is that right?
Correct.
And we should have held out 99?
Correct.
Did we already vote on 99? Okay, so we get a motion to reconsider item number 99?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, well, then we'll do 99 in the regular order if that's okay.
Thank you.
And then we also have to do item 90 because it was held out as well. Okay. For now, we'll move on to item number 32. Is there a motion on item 32?
Move approval of item 32, contract award for audit services for our self-insurance trusts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Barker, you had testimony on item 32, up to two minutes. Please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item here is for a competitive contractor, that's what I, it's for self-service trust, audit services. And I've had a chance to talk to some in finance. And my point is, over, I guess, the last couple of years, I've become interested in the procurement process. And I remember last year when you actually adopted a new procurement code and Mr. Scarborough was here. And I've read that. It's a G ordinance and it's section 43. I never see this on this particular item. And we today have 33, 34, 36, 38, and 39 in regards to contracting. One of the items has to do with training, 34, which I think is important because what's happening is, is that this, we're using the state title, 34, and it talks about three proposers, at least, being competitive. I'm for competition. I'm a Buckeye and I give a competitive cartwheel. But the point is, we're getting two. And I've seen too many where we just get two proposers. On this particular one, this company may be very well-qualified, but I noticed that they have been over with Valley Metro and Clifton Carson is over there now and they're also over at MAG. They're over, the people that I keep watching, Clifton Carson is now going to be on a contract with Valley Metro. That was the only other competitor. I believe in competition. I think that we should really look at what we're doing at procurement. And from what I see, 43, the G ordinance, is more inclusive of competition than what you're using at the state.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker, for your testimony. There are no other cards. Are there any comments or questions by this council on item 32? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes unanimously. Next item is item 41. Do we have a motion on 41? Councilwoman Williams, did you want to make a motion for it, please?
Well, I want to make a comment because I question, it says these will be provided citywide. However, it is also going to be done by the YMCA and District One has no YMCA. And I don't know if District Two does, but I'm very concerned that it isn't covering all the city services. I can tell you, in District One, we do have homeless kids, many living around Metro Center. And I want to be assured that there are some mobile vans that I know provide services to youth, homeless youth, that they are included.
Okay, so the question for...
And if so, I will move approval. If not, I'm against this.
All right, well, that's a fair question. It deserves a answer. Mr. Blue or Ms. Mackey, I don't know who wants to answer it. You may be wondering, why is our Economic Development Director answering a question about youth homelessness? And the answer is because a few years ago, we moved Workforce Investment Act from human services to economic development because we wanted to better tie our workforce development programs to economic development. That is why Chris Mackey is about to answer this question. Ms. Mackey.
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, absolutely. This will be citywide and we will work with the contract with the recipient to make sure that it is covered citywide. We already had a conversation with them yesterday just to make sure that they knew that all of the districts were equally as important and they would all be represented and they were in concurrence.
Thank you. Then I'll support this.
Thank you very much. I might politely request that they come meet with each of the council members to brief them individually how they're going to provide great services in their individual districts. And they might get some good suggestions from the council members how they could even improve those services because of the knowledge of the details of what's going on inside their district.
Mayor, that's a great idea. We'll get that set up right away.
Thank you very much. Council, so we had a motion. Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor made a second on it. Any other comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes unanimously. Item 42 is next. We have a motion on 42.
Move approval of item 42, authorization to accept and disburse strengthening working families grant funds.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Councilman Waring, did you have comments on this item? He's going to pass, okay. Any other council members have comments on this? Any cards? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes on an eight to one vote before this city council. Next item is item number 50. City clerk needs to read the title.
Forty-four.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Forty-four, my apologies. Forty-four is an airport concession consultant proposal. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on 44?
Move approval of item 44.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Are there cards on 44? Any comments by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes seven to, I believe, before this city council. Next item is, next item is item number 50. Item number 50, the city clerk needs to read the title, please.
Item 50, ordinance G6182, and ordinance relating to the regulation of scrap metal dealers, amending sections 19-60, 19-65, and 19-72A, Phoenix City Code.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion on item 50?
Move approval of item 50.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any cards on that item? Comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, eight to one. So this, that passed the city council by an eight to one vote. Next item is item 58, Event Equipment Rental Services Contract. Do we have a motion on 58?
Move approval of item 58.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any cards on that item? Comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes on a seven to two vote before this city council. Next item on the agenda is item number 76.2. Councilman Noakowski, do you have a motion on 76.2?
Mayor, a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second. There are a number of, well, not a large number of cards, a lot of people here to provide their input, but many wishing not to speak, but there are a few here wishing to speak. So I'll turn now to members of the public who wish to speak on 76.2.
Mayor, before you do, could I just offer a cautionary note on this one? This has to do with a procurement that's ongoing, that hasn't been completed. It's a little unusual to come before the governing body, before the procurement's completed. So in that sense, the transparency policy's still in effect. I don't think the proposers here today would comment, but it would be helpful if the comments were, we didn't talk about the evaluation process, the scope of the RFP, or particular contract terms and conditions.
So you're asking that the comments be limited...
To something other than those three things, to the evaluation process, the scope of the RFP, and the contract terms and conditions.
And that, and that's because the...
Yeah. We're right in the middle of the procurement.
But we're, we couldn't be more transparent than right in front of us with, we're present, we're on television. I mean, we normally would have to post that type of meeting, but we are, we are here. I'm serious about that. Why couldn't they, because of, it's so open to the public, why couldn't they testify on more substantive items? Because that would obviously, I'm guessing, eliminate testimony. That's what they came to testify on.
The key issue, Mayor, is that we are, we have not completed the procurement and so there might be evaluation committee members in the audience. I think, I'm sure there's at least one. And so the bottom line is, is when you're in the middle of a procurement, you want to sort of circumscribe the comments so that they don't, they don't talk about the merits of a particular proposal, that kind of stuff, until the evaluation committee has a chance to complete it.
I appreciate, now, I get, I better understand now what you are suggesting, out of an abundance of caution, so that for those that support Councilman Noakowski's motion and the second, under the unique circumstance of the timing. The timing arises because this is the last meeting before a six-week or so break where we won't have formal meetings unless an emergency occurs before this body. So in order to advance this proposal, it's, you know, giving sort of advanced authorization to the management of this, but what our city attorney is suggesting is that we significantly limit the nature of the comments so as not to, or so as to avoid any allegation that there has been an interference with the procurement process. So there's almost nothing they can talk about. So with that, under these circumstances, so, I mean, I, I'm almost cautioning anybody probably not to provide substantive testimony, and I'll just read your names into the record under these unique circumstances. We do not want any kind of a protest, assuming this is successful.
Mayor, there's one proposer. I don't believe that proposer's here today. What, the commenters could, for example, comment in favor of the item on the agenda. They could express their belief that...
Of the policy, but not the particular.
But not the particulars.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay, with that, I'll try to guide the speakers and that if they start to veer off in a different direction. Cynthia Domainzane-Meja, please, come forward, followed by Stanford Prescott, followed by Teodora Gaspar.
Hi, I'm sorry.
And obviously, you heard our city attorney, so to the best of your ability...
Yes.
...comment, if you would, on the general policy of moving forward with this without talking about this specific proposer who may or may not eventually get a agreement with the city of Phoenix. Please.
Okay, hi. Well, good morning to all. And I would just like to, my mom is going to speak on some sentiments in Spanish, but today, we just urge you to continue to firm and support the Phoenix ID. Right now, with DAPA and DACA stalled by the recent court decision, our community continues to be unprotected. Many of LGBTQ migrants, like myself, continue, and community members are detained attempting to report crimes or, because of the LGBTQ people of color, they are targeted by the police, and particularly our transgender migrant sisters. This ID provides security in interaction with the police and city agents. It is a step forward showing respect to our community, my community specifically, as a queer woman, recognizing both our belonging and contributions in the city and our authentic gender identities. Your support for this measure has been essential to move forward with the, with Phoenix and we can, we dream of an example of respect and dignity toward all of its residents. So today, we entrust you with the important work of ensuring the implementation of the One Phoenix City ID. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Stanford Prescott is here. Good to see you.
Thank you.
And again, you heard the general admonition of our city attorney, and I know you understand why, serving on a public body yourself.
Yes, and please interrupt me if I say anything that I shouldn't. Mayor and Council, thank you for having me here. My name is Stanford Prescott. I am a resident of District Eight and a governing board member for the Phoenix Union High School District. I thought our board meetings were long and then I came to this meeting. I'm here in support of the One Phoenix ID. Multiple school districts, including ours, Phoenix Union, as well as Crane, Balt, and Roosevelt, have passed resolutions in favor of the ID. and Roosevelt, have passed resolutions in favor of the ID. This is because the ID will enable parents to engage and volunteer at our schools, allows students to access city services, it'll make the neighborhoods around our schools safer, and all of these things are clear benefits to our students, our parents, and our schools. So, I'm here to ask that our council continue to vote in support of the One Phoenix ID. Thank you all for everything you do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Prescott, for coming down and your leadership on the Phoenix Union High School Board. Ms. Gaspar? Teodora Gaspar, are you here? Please. Followed by Chanel Poe, if Ms. Poe is still here as well.
Muy buenas tardes, Honorable Consejo y Alcalde. My nombre es Teodora Mejia. Yo soy madre de una mujer queer indocumentada. Y hoy estoy aquí para pedirles, para exigirles por favor que sigan firmes en su apoyo al Phoenix One ID.
Permítame.
Hello.
Ms. Gaspar, Judy Holmes is here to provide translation services, so if you could just do it in a little choppy section, so that way she can then translate back and forth, so everyone can fully understand your testimony. Ms. Holmes.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. My name is Teodora Mejia, and I am mother of a, of a kid that she's, I am undocumented.
Ahora que ha quedado frenada la medida ejecutiva de DACA y DAPA, necesitamos que nuestras comunidades sean más protegidas.
We need our communities to be more protected now that we are going through the process to, for DACA and DAPA.
Estamos viendo como nuestra comunidad está siendo doblemente detenida al reportar crímenes.
We can see how our community is detained twice by reporting crimes.
Están siendo criminalizados por la policía.
They are being criminalized by the police.
Esta identificación provee seguridad-
This identification provides security-
-al interactuar con la policía y agentes públicos.
While you interact with police and public agents.
Particularmente nuestras hermanas transgénero.
Particularly our sisters transgender.
Este es un paso hacia enseñar a nuestra comunidad respeto-
This is a step to show the community respect.
... pertenencia y contribución a esta ciudad-
Contribution to the city and that feel, a feel of belonging.
... y hacia nuestras auténticas identidades de género.
And towards our authentic community of gender.
Su apoyo a esta medida ha sido esencial-
The support of this measure is essential.
... para avanzar hacia la Phoenix que todos soñamos.
To progress, to have Phoenix that we all dream of.
Un ejemplo de respeto y dignidad para todos sus residentes.
An example of dignity, an example of all the residents.
Así que les confiamos este importante trabajo de asegurar-
So we're entrusting this important job to ensure-
... la implementación del One Phoenix ID.
The implementation of Phoenix One ID.
Para el Phoenix que todos nosotros soñamos.
For the Phoenix that we all dreamed for.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Is Ms. Chanel Poe still here? Chanel Poe is in favor of the proposal. Mary Moore, did you provide testimony before this council on this item?
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of this city council. My name is Mary Moore, and I reside in District Six. I am here to show my support for the municipal ID card and the urgency to move forward in creating a safer and more inclusive city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moore. That's all the cards to speak. I have, I guess approximately thirty cards of folks in favor of the proposal, not wishing to speak. Is anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on item seventy-six point two? If I missed you, or you decided you want to provide testimony now? Okay, so these cards will be submitted for the record in favor of the proposal. So we have a motion in favor of seventy-six point two. We have a second. I'll now turn to members of the council. Councilman Waring, please.
I guess my first question is, Brad, what can I talk about, if anything?
You just can't talk about the specific proposal of this proposer. So, to the extent that you-
So I can talk about the broad idea of whether it's a good idea.
Yes.
And whether, because this vote is not whether to do it, this is to investigate further.
Yes.
So, can I talk about that, or is that talking about the proposer?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Please, as somebody up there said, please stop me if I'm saying something that-
No problem.
-I don't want us to waste time on this. Okay. So, so I sat through the-
Stop, stop, stop.
Stop now.
That was, that was, that was funny. First, that was actually very funny, but, but that was also not a-
Councilman Nowakowski is practicing law again.
I would, I would never see any of you that power, but Brad-
Ask and you shall receive.
So, so, no, I, but that was nicely done, nicely done. You're like the Seinfeld of this whole, whole meeting. It's very nice. So, I guess I'm the Costanza? Is that it? I don't know. But nineteen nineties humor there. So, so I don't think we should be spending money on this. We've had several subcommittee hearings and so forth. I attended a good part of the, what was it called? Tony, what is that meeting officially called that happened a couple days ago?
That was the first panel discussion-
Panel discussion, okay.
-we were reviewing the hard copy paper.
So I did, you did a panel discussion, so I did actually, you know, hear some of the discussion that's going in and what this is. You know, we just won't beat it to death, but some of you might say too late, so, but it won't beat it to death. We just passed a tax increase. We're now spending city resources, that's really what this vote is, spending more city resources, working with this company more. Is that a way to say it in layman's terms?
Mayor and Councilman Waring, over the summer, we will interview this one proposer, who is SF Global. We will begin negotiations if that's what the panel concludes, and then we also will develop policies, draft policies, all to come back to the council August thirty-one for a further discussion and for a final vote.
And all of that costs money, obviously, which we're short of, just raised taxes thirty minutes ago. So, it's not something I feel we should be spending time on. I'm not saying the folks, presumably in the audience, based on other groups of people who have come down and spoken at our meetings before, if it's anything like that, I understand there's a problem that needs to be addressed. I believe that problem of identification for people who maybe not, can't get other forms of identification for one reason or another, that needs to go through the federal government, not us. We're talking about a secondary form of identification, which, as we had discussed several times in subcommittees, you know, the police testimony was, it's not really worth a whole lot. It doesn't put you in any databases where they can identify who you actually are. We had quite a bit of extensive testimony, there's no reason to rehash it here. But to spend money on this, I think is wrong, given that we've got a lot of other priorities that either aren't being funded correctly, or we're having to raise taxes to fund them. So, this is something that, that I just don't think should move forward. I don't know how much money is going to be expended this summer, but I guess I'd be a little surprised if, if you come back with a recommendation saying we need to move forward. There was a discussion, at the panel discussion, about the genesis of this. There was quite a vociferous argument between people who are supportive and maybe people who are not so supportive, about why are we even interested in doing this? And, and I thought the people who aren't as supportive of this project made an excellent point. We started this trying to save the city money by consolidating the cards. We want to make sure Ed doesn't throw his back out when he sits on his enormous wallet with all the city cards that he has shown at different meetings over time, because I think it was fourteen cards or whatever that you carry around in your wallet, golf card, library card, et cetera, et cetera. You know, we, we looked at, at condensing that to one card, and now we're doing this, which doesn't do any of that. At least that wasn't the discussion, as I understood it, going forward. So it's, it's a little bit frustrating that we've taken an idea that was designed to save the city money. We did research, found out it actually would have cost way too much to do it. I think your estimate was maybe five million dollars, if memory serves, and now we're going to do something that maybe doesn't cost five million dollars, but doesn't accomplish any of the original goals. That's more than a little frustrating. So, I, I don't think we should be doing this, particularly in light of the vote that just happened an hour or so ago, but, but I've said my piece and-
Thank you very much, Councilman Waring. I wanted City Manager to clarify the issue of cost to the city of the proposal.
Mayor, Councilman Waring, I just want to clarify, I think you implied this, I want to be sure. We're, the direction of the council in this was that it would not cost the city money, and so we are not spending money this summer, other than the time of the people involved. I think you were applying that, but I just wanted to clarify.
I will say it more directly.
Tony will not be spending cash money out of the city's coffers, but Tony's time and the time of city employees.
Time, Tony's health care, Tony's pension, all that stuff gets wrapped in, so it does cost money at a time where we're short. We just raised taxes, so I'm pretty sure I'm on firm ground by saying we're a little short. And that, you're right, this may not, but obviously if we're spending staffers' time that could be spent elsewhere, that's not really true. If we could have fewer administrative staffers and more police officers, as Sal was talking about earlier, it's a budget pie, and at some point if you take out a chunk, you can't spend it somewhere else. But the original proposal was not going to be revenue neutral. That was a five million dollar price tag, I believe staff came up with, about consolidating the cars. Now, we've completely deviated from that to something that's free and accomplishes, to my mind, nothing. And we're still using staff, staff time to do it.
I'll just ask Tony to clarify.
Yes.
The direction of the council for this RFP was that it not costs the city money, and Tony, what else is in-
But the original subcommittee discussions were something completely different.
Mayor and Councilman Waring, to clarify for the RFP that we issued, we asked for respondents to look at three different areas, creating a municipal ID card, creating a municipal ID card with a debit option, and then also creating a unified city services card, which you were referring to, that's the combination of the golf card and the senior centers and the parks cards, all into one easy-to-use card. So we asked for respondents to look at all three of those areas and give us proposals, if they chose, on one or all of those areas.
But Mayor, Ed and Tony, you had gone out, though, prior, for, at least for the subcommittee, and looked at what consolidating, so I guess C, is that the, the third choice you just listed, was going to be five million dollars. Are you saying they may come in less than five million dollars, or somehow be revenue neutral? Because I'm not sure how they make money in that scenario.
Councilman-
All right, we're getting, and I guess, I'm looking at, we're veering pretty close to the actual RFP, and there will be reviewing that.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
We'll have a chance, obviously, you know, this doesn't go into place until we have a final vote of this, this council, so we'll have a chance, but we're veering off into the specifics of the RFP at this point.
Right, and, and to answer Councilman's question, we did talk at subcommittees about the research that the IT staff did do, and it was in the million-dollar range, several million dollars, to combine all of the cards together. However, that's what the panel is currently, currently reviewing, is this response to see what the, what the outside private sector can do to partner with the city.
And Tony, I'm going to stop there. I don't want you to get in trouble, or the local gendarmes to come throw the cuffs on me either. So, you know, Brad, don't want to cross with him.
All right, I think Councilman Stark was next, and then Councilman Nowakowski.
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, so the unified city services card is still on the table?
Yes, Councilwoman.
So there is still that potential that we could see cost savings? Okay.
Yes, Councilwoman, that is still on the table. Thank you.
Councilman Nowakowski.
So just clarification, so this basically is a municipal ID that can be used as a secondary ID card. We're looking at ways to be more efficient as a city of Phoenix by combining all of our, our service cards into one, and looking into the future of even having it as a debit card for those individuals that happen to want to pay the water bill online, that they can actually use a debit card. That's a part of this ID, if they want that option. And then we're looking at options that it wouldn't cost the City of Phoenix anything, right?
Correct, Councilman Nowakowski. We have asked for responses in all of those areas, and we reiterated several times in the proposal, at no cost to the city.
It's just basically how can we have a municipal ID card that's more efficient than what we're running right now as a city with all fourteen different cards that we have, right?
Correct.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments by members of this council on item seventy-six point two? I'm going to wait just a moment, because I think, Councilmember, we've had a long meeting, and people are coming in and out for short restroom breaks, or there's coffee or snacks back there, and it's understandable, it's lunchtime that people would run out, so I want to make sure we get folks back in the room. Councilman Valenzuela, you have a question?
Just a quick comment. I, I've been, like some of my colleagues, very consistent in, in supporting this, and I appreciate that the, the dialogue and the work continues, and I am, I'm a yes on this. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in favor of seventy-six point two. We have a second roll call.
DeCiccio. Nowakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, the item passes on a six to three vote. Now we're going to move on to the planning and zoning matters before this city council. Let's see, item ninety was inadvertently taken out of, out earlier, so let's just take care of item number ninety. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion on item number ninety?
Motion to approve item ninety, which relates to deeds and easements.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any cards on item number ninety? Are there any comments or questions before this city council? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Nowakowski. Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item number ninety-nine. Councilman Williams, this is in your district, how would you like to proceed on item ninety-nine?
I need to read a statement, because I had received a letter. I need to clarify.
Please.
I'm going to move to approve this request per the Planning Commission recommendation, because stipulations require general conformance to the site plan, a double row of trees along the east setback, and stipulate to a minimum solid block wall fence height of eight feet, and do not allow any outdoor storage above that height limit. There are traffic issues in this area due to a very chequered development.
Wait, that was your motion, now you're going to make a statement? Let's see, a second on the motion, is there a second on the motion? Second, so now please proceed.
Okay. Because of how this area is developing, and it's very chequered, that there are street connections that are not completed. And we also have a very successful charter school in the area. The request to have ADOT come in and the city come in and perform all this work is, is probably not legal. So, I cannot include anything for ADOT or the City of Phoenix to impose any additional requirements to address these existing street issues.
Thank you for that statement. So we have a motion in favor of item ninety-nine with those additional stipulations by the councilwoman. We have a second. Mr. Stevenson, is that appropriate motion?
Mayor, members of council, that was an appropriate motion. The councilwoman was just explaining the stipulations that were put on the request per the Planning Commission.
These are not new stipulations?
They're not new stipulations. They were stipulations added by the Planning Commission, but she received a letter from a constituent that was concerned about not addressing those things and broader traffic issues in the area. So she was just reiterating that the stipulations address the issues-
Okay.
-that he brought up, except for the larger traffic issues, which are-
The motion was in favor of the Planning Commission recommendation, that was the second, and the Councilman Williams was just explaining why additional ones weren't added on-
Correct.
-today, okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Any additional comments by members of this council? It's in a three-quarter vote, is it? We're, we're short of people. All right, we're going to go with it. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego. And Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so we got just nick of time, I think it was unanimous vote, so it's a unanimous vote in favor of item number ninety-nine by the city council. Next item is item one oh four. Let's see, whose district is that? Just a moment. Councilman Nowakowski, item number one oh four is next, that is in District Seven, southeast corner of Tenth Avenue and Washington Street. We could, I don't know how you want to proceed, if you want to have a short staff presentation on what they're, what's being proposed. We do have one card wishing to speak on the, on the item, so I don't know if you want to have staff do a report, then do a motion, staff report, then public, and then a motion. How, how would you like to proceed?
I'd like to have staff, staff report, then the public.
Mr. Stevenson, what is being proposed on item number one oh four?
Mayor, members of council, item number one oh four is a request to rezone for a mix of uses via PUD for a multifamily residential project located at the southeast corner of Tenth Avenue in Washington. This was approved by the Central City Village Planning Committee by a vote of seventeen to zero. The Planning Commission also recommended approval per the Village Planning Committee with an additional stipulation by a five to zero vote. Since that time, the applicant did submit a letter saying that they're supportive of an adjacent property owner's desires to see some on-street parking changes within that area, and that letter was, went, went to Councilman Nowakowski, and I believe is the source of why he wanted to make some comments here this afternoon.
All right, do you want to put a motion here? We have one card on the item in favor of the proposal. Do you want to hear that card first?
Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion to approve staff's recommendation. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Now I'll turn to a member of the public that wishes to speak. The Honorable Fidelis Garcia, you should provide testimony for the city council, up to two minutes. Manjula Vaz also filled out a card, available to speak if requested, not marking in favor or opposed. Ms. Vaz, are you in favor of the proposal?
Actually, Mayor, I'm going to wrap this up. Yeah, I don't need to speak.
Okay, appreciate it. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. First of all, Mr. Mayor, we, my client, Burning Bird Partners, is a small business owner that's adjacent to this area, as we all know, is blighted as part of the Capitol Mall. The applicant has been extremely supportive of the small business owner. The only reason we're here, Mr. Mayor, is because of the street parking. Recently, the city did change the horizontal parking to diagonal parking on the west side of the street, but the restricted parking signs that were there were never put back up, and so that was one issue that my client would like to have addressed, is to get those signs up. In addition to that, there is restricted parking on the east side of Tenth Avenue. It is horizontal parking, and if possible, because of the added density, if the city could look into also making that diagonal parking, so that the tenants, it won't affect their businesses, and obviously, it won't have a negative effect on the valuation of the property. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. Councilman Nowakowski.
Mayor, what I'd like to do is, we received this letter from the neighboring business just a couple days ago. I'd like to sit down with our streets staff and to find a parking solution later on in the future, but not to hold up this process today. So what I, I promise that our staff will reach out, and will try to find some type of parking solution, working with the Streets Department.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments before this council? So the motion was in favor of staff recommendation, there was a second with an acknowledgement that they are going to work during, throughout the summer and thereafter on parking solutions. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes unanimously before the city council. Next item on the agenda is item number one oh seven, although apparently we're going to hear one oh seven through one oh nine together, at least for purposes of a, the public hearing. Item number one oh seven has to do with the Walkable Urban Code revisions to the Eastlake-Garfield character area. We'll get a short staff report. I guess that will cover one oh seven through one oh nine as well, Mr. Stevenson?
Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. And then we'll hold a public hearing, and then we'll see if there is a motion on one on 107. We have to do individual votes, Mr. Holm, I assume, on 107, 108, and 109, even though we can do one public hearing. And then we'll see if there is a vote on those, a motion and a vote on those individual items. So, Mr. Stevenson, our planning director, what are you proposing, or what is the city proposing as it relates to the WUCO for the Garfield, Eastlake-Garfield area?
Mayor members of council, I'll present a little background on all three of these items since they're all related. They are related to implementing our Reinvent Phoenix Transit Area Planning Process that a number of you have been involved with and heard about over the last several years. In this particular case, they are, all the proposed changes are just in the Eastlake-Garfield area, which is down in District 8 over here. Pursuant to the council policy plans that were approved last June and July, staff has been working on continuing to implement the Reinvent Phoenix Planning Process. So right now, we're in this third phase here, kind of this mapping and implementation exercise. Per the direction of the council, they asked us to start in the Eastlake-Garfield area first. That's what staff has been working on for the last year. So as part of this effort right here, we are going through and changing the general plan maps. That is what item number 108 is. So that's a general plan amendment to change the land use designations. And then item 109 is actual change of the zoning to adopt the walkable urban code as the zoning for those areas. Staff has had a significant amount of outreach since that time. About 1,200 letters have gone out. There are 36 different meetings with residents, business owners, some one-on-one. Many large group ones were held to make sure that we reach out to everyone within these particular areas. You see, this map shows the larger boundaries. So this darker red color is the actual Eastlake-Garfield planning area for the transit district plans, and you see the light rail lines that run east and west here. The importance of this black line here is the effort that staff has undertaken is really to replace the existing zoning in that area, which is our TOD2 zoning overlay area. So back in early 2000, the city put in interim transit overlay districts on properties that are within a quarter mile of the light rail station stops. And so that's what this ballpark looks at here. So that's our effort to undertake those areas and change that zoning to the walkable urban code. We do include a few parcels just outside of those areas that we'll talk about as well. This is the proposed general plan map. As part of this map, it creates a couple of different categories here that are predominantly mixed-use ones of residential, 15-plus, and commercial. That's the red and brown color. That's the bulk of this area here. Where you see this, which appears purple on this, is actually blue, and that shows some public, quasi-public. Those are just the general plan land use designations. The 15-plus represents the unlimited density that is permitted within the walkable urban code because it doesn't govern by density. It governs by development standards. This item is the actual zoning case. So this is the one that changes the zoning for individual properties. Again, you see the black line, which is the TOD area that was the basis for staff's start. You see us going out to a few different areas that were based upon property or input who said they wanted to be included. They were proximate, so we did include those. There are some ones that folks inside this area that did not wish to be included. For example, former Councilman Good owns a property right here. He did not want to be included, so we are not changing his parcel zoning as part of this, this effort. But you see, what this does is adopt, replace those TOD zoning overlay along with the base zoning, and puts in the walkable urban code, which was adopted by the council in July pursuant to the policy plans that were done at this time. Staff does request approval of the NHD Subcommittee Recommendation for all three of those items. The other item that I would just clarify real fast on the text amendment is, it happens just in this Eastlake character area, and it has to do with building step-back heights related to these single-family developed properties but zoned multifamily. And so that just creates some additional building height step-backs adjacent to those properties that are single-family developed, but they have multifamily zoning. And with that, Ms. Hoffman and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Stevenson on the proposal for a walkable urban code in the Eastlake, Garfield Eastlake area? There is a couple cards on those items. First, I want to see if there's any questions from Mr. Stevenson on the proposal. Okay, so now I'm going to open up the public hearing on item 107 through 109, and we'll take testimony on one or all of those items. The public hearing is now open. First speaker will be Lawrence Bailey. You indicated you're opposed to the item. Mr. Bailey, should you provide testimony before this council? Mr., I have a card for, it's on 108, and I'll take testimony on 107, 108, or 109 at this time, Mr. Lawrence Bailey. Okay, for the record, Mr. Bailey was opposed to the proposal. Roina Torres Rosell indicated that you are partially opposed. Good to see you. Up to two minutes' testimony.
Roina Rosell, our family has owned Esteca Wedding Plaza and been a member of District 8 for 60-some years. We were actively involved in the Booker T. Washington redevelopment area, which goes from 12th Street to 7th Street, from Van Buren to the railroad tracks. And the plan was a 40-year plan, which sort of sunsetted near the time when Reinvent Phoenix came along. At that time, there were three distinct neighborhoods in that area, and still are, Booker T. Washington, Eastlake, and Garfield, and the station happens to land right in the middle of two of those stations, two of those neighborhoods. Philosophically, historically, we have all been neighborhoods who've gotten along, who have supported each other in their developments, but have been different in our approaches and in our final design options for those neighborhoods. It's my understanding that the city council is about to rezone our property today as T-55. Our family opposes this. We have made this very clear to the staff. We, at the very least, want T-57. We want the medium urban center designation, and believe that that is what the majority property owners in the area that's identified as Booker T. Washington, 12th Street to 7th Street. I am not speaking for, you know, for Eastlake. I'm not speaking for Garfield, only for that segment of what you're about to consider today. And we've made this very clear to the staff, and I believe, like what Michael Johnson said earlier today, it's never too late to, to correct something, to do something right. And I have a map from the city staff that said prior to going to the council, a lot of properties in that section would be T-57. I only thought the battle is, why not us? Then if everybody else, why not us? And then somehow, maybe my misunderstanding of what you did on July 2015 or been misled, after that meeting, was told that the council decided that we could only be a minor urban center and that we could only go T-55. And that somehow, the council felt that's because that's what the neighborhood wanted. And so I'm here to say, that's not what the neighborhood, the part that I'm talking about, wants for that particular area. This is the first of 18-plus areas you're going to be looking at, and I'm thinking, you're going to run into the same scenario along the route, where you have now, you have 18 stations, and out of those 18 stations, you, that were the first existing stations, you have labeled us like the, in the bottom four zoning areas. And the staff is telling us, because somehow, those people and property owners along Central can handle it, and we can't. And I'm saying that right now, with the development that currently exists in that area between 7th Street and 12th Street, we, in, in practicality, have T-55 already. We've got three-to-five-story buildings there. We need something higher that will help us to take the vision we've done and worked for so many years to the next level, and that this is not enough. And we're asking that the council direct the staff to relook and revisit. I'm not saying tear apart the whole thing. I'm not even saying that the research and everything, you know, is for nothing. I'm saying that it needs to be attitude, and it needs to be fine-tuned specifically to that particular area in this case.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I let you go a little bit longer because it is a very important decision as it affects your property. Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
Councilman, I have one more. Do you have a question specifically?
Just related to her.
Do you have a question for Ms. Torres?
Well, it's related to her case, but it's your call, Mayor. Do whatever you say.
I have one more card, but go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
Just the staff. I mean, are we designating individuals' property without their consent? Or how does this work? Because she's making, I mean, at least the allegation here, the concern is, is that something's happening to her individual property, and is there a designation occurring that she does not agree to? I don't know. Is that legal?
So, Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, the issue is that her existing zoning today on the properties that, that her and her family control, which is a parcel that fronts right down here, and then this larger neighborhood area, they have several parcels in there as well. The zoning that's there today is R-16, single-family residential in the back, which is two stories, 30 feet. And then they have C-2 up on the front where the bridal shop is, and which is also two stories, 30 feet is the maximum height. This proposed item gives them a transect zoning of T-55, which is a 56-feet-high maximum, 80% lock coverage. It allows mixed-use, commercial, retail, office, multifamily, and residential. That's what this area is in blue, which is the predominant zoning category for this, this Eastlake-Garfield, excuse me, TOD area. And so as part of that, they are getting a significant upzoning, but it's not as much as she would like. What she's advocating for is a T-57, which would allow up to 100 feet of height for that whole area.
So it's an upzoning, but not as much of an upzoning as Ms. Rosell would, would like for her family?
Correct, Mayor.
Mayor, just... DeCiccio, please.
Yeah, if I could follow up, I get that part of it. It's just that, you know, I know we heard part of this, at least, in one of the subcommittees, and we didn't hear that concern, but that's okay. You have a right to express the concern, even to the very last second, just letting you know.
Right. And I think the answer to your question is yes. It is being zoned.
Right.
And it's, and this will happen to every property owner along the light rail.
At least, my impression was that they were going to be mostly supportive, or not all. I mean, and how do we, is there an opt-out where an individual could say, no, I don't want that? Because that's, even if we're upzoning, we're changing their designation without their approval. Sandy says yes, so can I, can I just at least get that on the record?
Mayor and council, that is up to the, up to ultimately the mayor and council to decide. You have the authority, you know, to zone people's properties. You know, in this particular case, a lot of times, there's a potential for a Prop 207 claim. We don't believe there is one in this particular instance because we're granting more entitlements than they have today. So it may not be as much as they want in the ideal world from their perspective, but it's far more than they have today, so we're not impacting their legal right. But if they certainly said, I don't want you to do this, that's up to the mayor and council as part of your purview.
In this particular instance, I don't think Ms. Rosell is asking for an opt-out. I think she's asking, though, if she'd like more.
I don't want to end up being punished for coming to talk to the principal. Right.
No, no. Well, I mean, it's still, from my end of it, I'm looking at is also on the legal end of it, is that you can't, at least I don't believe that government can go and do something with your personal property. Well, actually, we could probably take all your property, but I don't know if we can change the zoning on that without the owner's approval, and I'm just wondering if there's any way to... I'll have a difficult time supporting this unless there's some sort of opt-out where individuals can opt out of it. I mean, you can always say no. It's not a punishment at that point. It's your choice. You know, it is, it is a higher designation, but you have a right to make that decision on your own without being forced into you, is from where I'm coming from.
Well, that wasn't an offer, I mean, option that was explained, so...
Just, I'm not, it's an uncomfortable thing because it's not my area, but it comes down to a property right issue for me.
I think in the particular case of Garfield Eastlake, it's fair to say that many, many support the proposal. Some feel it's not dense enough. Others feel it's too much density for the area, and we are going to run into this along the light rail, the various transit-oriented development proposals where, you know, we obviously want to max out the value of having light rail there, but not everyone is going to, to agree, and they're going to agree on both sides of it. They're going to agree it's too much. Some are going to say it's too little, and that's, I think, what we've run into relative to Garfield Eastlake. I don't want to mischaracterize, Mr. Stevenson.
Mayor, that's correct.
All right. Councilman Nowakowski, please.
Mayor, Esteca Bridal's been an icon for the city of Phoenix since I can remember. I mean, Immaculate Heart's right across the street, and matter of fact, I believe that the Torres family owns most of the property, or is single-family housing behind the property, right?
Correct.
So, and it's close, I mean, it's right there, right off of 9th Street and, and Washington. Is there a way that we just cut that piece out and, and have her come back and look into that 5.7?
So, Mayor members of council, for this particular item, if they desire, and her request is to exclude them, that certainly is within the purview of the council. You know, I don't think she's asking that. I think what she's saying is she wants greater intensity than the plan actually gave her as part of the very involved public process that developed that. And so this particular exercise is really staff implementing the plan that the mayor and council voted on, in this case, back in June of last year. And so that's where we took the guidance of the 56 feet. And so you'll see, for example, on, you know, another project coming up later, 56 feet would allow you to develop a hotel, you know, five stories. You can build four-story apartments. You can have mixed-use commercials. So it's a significant upzoning as it comes forward to you with the recommendation of approval by staff. Certainly, if she wants to opt out, that's entirely up to the council. The council could, she could always come back with a specific plan or proposal in the future and ask for something additional then at that point. There could be additional discussions, you know, maybe four or five years down the road of, look, now that we've had development that's happened in this area, we wish to revisit the plan and say, what things should we update and be new as part of that plan? Right now, no one's building anything in that particular area that would really warrant the 5.7, you know, intensity of height. People are building four stories, five stories, a mix of stick-built. That is 56 feet. And so it really does represent what the zoning and development intensity that we see happening within that transit district area right now.
Mayor?
Councilman, please.
Now, you all said that there's about 35 different community meetings out there. How many of those meetings were actually west of 13th Street?
Mayor members of council, I'll have some staff come down here. If you have another question, we can get that information for you, but let's give them a minute to find out.
Yeah, the reason I was asking is that it's a very diverse community, and basically you have a very African-American, a very Hispanic community. You have one of the oldest Catholic churches, or the oldest Catholic church, Immaculate Heart, which is right there on 9th Street in Washington. So you have two different communities, so I want to make sure that you, you had input from both communities, and the whole Garfield area is also in that transition period right now where it's changing a lot. So I just want to make sure that we have input in those 35 meetings from all sectors of that, of that community.
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, we have eight meetings for the area in question that were focused on that area west of, the western portion of this area.
All right, Council, well, let's see. I'll turn to Councilman Pastor, and then Councilman Nowakowski, you have more questions? You have a chance to formulate those. Councilman Pastor, Councilwoman?
So this went through our subcommittee, but we did not hear these concerns. My question to you is, I think I heard earlier, Councilman Good opted out of the zoning?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if you opt out, what does that mean for future zoning?
Mayor, Councilman Pastor, if you opt out, your zoning would stay the same. So it would be what it is today, and if somebody wished to develop that property in the future, they would eventually come in and talk to staff, just like any other private property owner would. They are free to petition the government to rezone their property. They would come in and talk to staff about rezoning. We would say, here's the council adopted policy plan. If it's the same as it is today, that's what we would hand them. If it was some new updated version in the future, depending when they came in, that's what we would hand them as the basis for the discussion. And then they'd have to do a private rezoning application to then come work with the public, work with the mayor and council to rezone their property at that time.
And the zoning right next to the east side is what? Where there are current, is it T-5?
Yeah, so the, the areas you see up on this map here, the blue is all T-55.
So the one, there's, right next to their property, there's, I'm not sure if it's completed, but there's something being built, multifamily.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, there is projects that are under, that are being built that were rezoned as part of a PUD in the past, but their height is the 56, 60 feet. Some I don't exactly what the height is, but it's four and five stories, which will be permitted under the T-55. It's, it's basically the equivalent.
And T-7, four and five stories? Tell me how many stories T-7 would be.
So, T-57 would allow 100 feet. So you're talking...
How many stories?
You know, nine, 10 stories in that ballpark.
So nine, 10 stories. I'm thinking, you have to, I'm a visual person, so can you give me a current place that we have nine to 10 stories? I'm sure you know this, Alan.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, I believe the, the former BMO bank building
Okay.
that's being converted to residential is, I think, about 110 feet in height.
So is it possible, then, to make it T-5 with the ability to go up to T-7, kind of like what's been happening in the core, with the additional incentive? I don't know what we all call it, but...
So Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, in this particular case, the, the policy plan adopted by the mayor and council did not have the, the ability to do the, the T-57 in terms of that height, because the plan says only T-55. So by way of example, getting back to our BMO example, the, the project that Mr. Bull brought forward in your district on the east and west side, that was basically a T-55 as well. That's what was designated for those properties, and so that's where they went to the incentive height of that 56 feet. We are proposing just to allow the 56 feet by right as, as this property not have the incentive part of it.
I know, but I guess what I'm saying is, could we add the incentive part? Leave it 56 and then add an incentive part?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, as part of this application, we, we couldn't do that because we have not advertised
Okay.
for, for a mechanism like that, but if that's the direction of the council, we could look at doing something like that.
Okay, so I have a, a motion, because I don't think this is where it's at right now, and I guess it is in District 8, so I just, I would love to speak before there's a motion on the table.
Real quick.
Well, my motion is to...
Yeah, so we're still in public hearing right now.
All right.
And this really was, all of this discussion was as a result of Ms. Rosell's testimony, so I do think it's appropriate to have this discussion during public hearing. We'll have to finish the public hearing. to finish the public hearing, then turn it into a council member to see if there is a motion on 107 outside of the public hearing, but if you have comments leading towards something hinting at where you may go, and that would be appropriate to do so, and then I'll turn over to Councilman Nowakowski and the Vice Mayor. I don't know if you want to make comments, or wait till there is a, the public hearing is closed and then there's a motion?
Well, the comments are that we're hearing a concern that was never brought to us as we went through the process in the subcommittee, so I don't think it's ready as I thought it was in the subcommittee, so my comments would be, when I'm able to speak out of the public comment, or public comment, is to recommend a continuation.
Okay, and so, let me, let me do this, Ms. Rozelle has provided her testimony, there are some comments relative to that, but I don't want to, we should probably close the public hearing unless there's additional comments on item 107, 108, or 109, then I'll turn it to council members, we can have this discussion among ourselves. Public hearing, is there anyone else here wishing to provide testimony on 107, 108, 109? Public hearing is now closed, Councilman Nowakowski, and then the Vice Mayor.
I'll go ahead, Vice Mayor, it's your-
Wonderful, thank you. Alan, could you talk a little bit about some of, so, I guess, maybe just to start further back, that when, before I was elected, the Village Planning Commission looked at place types in the area, and there was a lot of debate about this particular location, and it passed on a divided vote, but the people who were against it wanted less height, is that accurate? That some people felt that the tight place type was too dense, too much height?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that is correct, what you are referencing is the TOD policy document that was adopted ultimately by the mayor and council in 2012, and so, that went forward very early on in our reinvent process to establish the maximum height windows, if you will, so that we could have our consultant and the public focus in on developing a code and a plan that addressed all the issues that needed to be done as part of the process, as opposed to just being weighted down with discussions about some neighbors wanting, not wanting height, others who are property owners wanted more height, so that policy process went through, it was adopted with those place types, and in this particular instance, that minor urban center was the one that was established for Eastlake, it was somewhat controversial at the village at the time, but that is what provided the overall guidance, you know, in terms of what the maximum height would be.
And what was some of the feedback we've received from industrial property owners in the area?
So, in this particular stretch of the light rail line, one of the other challenges that we have is, there's a significant amount of industrial property, and there's a lot of concerns from those property owners about change too fast, and them being driven out of the areas where they have historically located, along with residents, we heard some of those same concerns, so the larger concerns that we heard from the public in this stretch of the light rail line as compared to areas along Central Avenue and other parts, has been concern about too much rapid change and too much urbanization and too much height, so that's why the place types reflect a lot of that discussion, and why the walkable urban code has provisions to allow for the industrial uses to kind of continue on in a smaller fashion, so that way, they can protect their existing property rights, but at the same time, allow some of the things that the city needed to see happen from an economic development perspective, as well as from the light rail ridership perspective.
Thank you, and then, when this particular item was debated at the village, my understanding is the debate was quite robust, but there were people on both sides, many people feeling this wasn't high enough, but many others feeling this was too much height, so one village planning commissioner used the term Goldilocks with me, that they just tried to find something in the middle?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's correct, the central city village planning committee deals a lot with height issues, they have a very diverse membership, and so, there are a couple of folks who live within this transit policy area who are on the village, and they very much were opposed to additional height, there are other members who very much see this as something that there should have been some more height, but it was something that ultimately, that middle ground was what was selected after a lot of debate.
Wonderful, so I guess my sense is this is not a perfect plan, but we're trying to balance feedback from existing property owners who say there's too much, and others who say that there's not enough, I think that if there are additional requests for property changes in this area, that I will look very openly on them if we need to have further dialogue, but right now, I think we have an appropriate balance that reflects the process that began in 2012. I do think this has been debated, I appreciate staff with over 30 meetings just in this section, but many more for years beyond that, and I think we have had a chance to have a robust conversation, and I want to honor that process, so I will move approval. Councilman Nowakowski.
Mayor, members of council, I think you just need to take them kind of one at a time, because we do have three items on the floor related to this, and so, maybe if you want to start with item 107, and then we can go from there.
Wonderful, thank you, and I do very much appreciate the Torres's family longstanding commitment to this area, I got married in a dress from Esteca, appreciate your investment in the community and the development, and we'll look forward to continuing to work with you, and very open to if there is a time when T-5.7 makes sense and there's an applicant making it work out with the community, but I do want to honor the years of process that got us where we are here today, so.
Do we need a motion on 107, Vice Mayor?
Move approval of 107.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I would just say, per the NHD Subcommittee recommendation, adopt the related ordinance.
Per the NHD Subcommittee, and adopt the related ordinance.
Is there a motion in favor of 107? Is there a second? All right, I will second that motion, are there any additional comments or questions on item 107?
Mayor, I would like to do a second motion?
Substitute motion?
Substitute motion.
Please, Councilman.
Sorry, I would like to continue this item, second, to August when we get back, yes.
Okay, so the motion is to continue the item to August 31st, we have a second on that item, does it, that count as a substitute motion, or is that a, I forget, we dealt with this a couple meetings ago?
It's not strictly speaking a substitute motion, because it's essentially not a motion to amend.
Okay, anyway, so the motion on the table right now is a motion to continue this item till our next regularly scheduled meeting, we have a second, are there any comments by this council on the motion to continue this item?
If it does come back, I'd sure like to see an opt-out provision in there, you know, just because I may like it, doesn't mean others like it, and I don't want to force something onto someone that may not feel comfortable with it, I mean, I'd like to support the councilwoman for that area and that case, but in the same token, I just don't want to take anyone's individual private property rights away from that, so whatever we come back with, if this passes, I'd sure like to see an opt-out provision.
Councilman Nowakowski, comments on the continuance, Councilman DeZizio laid the edges there, but what the heck, Councilman Nowakowski.
Mayor, I'd like to see if there's support from that community or not support, so if you could come back with maybe support letters, or, there's one thing about the village, and there's others, another thing that, the community that's right there at the site, so I'd like to see individuals that have single-family dwellings and businesses and that live right there, if they're supportive or not.
All right, thank you very, thank you very much, I believe that there was significant support for this proposal, it's not unanimous, there were people on both sides, some who supported it, thought, some who thought it was too much, some who thought it was not enough, we're going to get that, we'll never get to complete unanimity on the transit-oriented development plans around the various sites, that being said, Councilwoman Pastor has some legitimate questions that she wants to get answered in advance of the vote, and out of respect for her, I will support the continuance, so that way, everybody feels fully comfortable at the time we make this vote, so I'll be supporting the motion. With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, this item will be back before this council at our first meeting after the summer break, Councilman Pastor, did you want to make a similar motion on item 108? I'm assuming, are those, are those, Mr. Stevenson?
They're all related, right?
Well, does 108 have to do with the issues that Ms. Rozelle brought up?
Mayor members of council, the, I think the only one that Ms. Rozelle has concerns with is item 109, which is the actual zoning case, because that's what establishes the transect districts, the, item 108 is the policy plan, that wouldn't change no matter what, and then, item 107 is the text amendment that deals with the area in yellow on the plan, which is not at all proximate to the site, and not any issues.
In light of the continuance on item 107, would it make the most sense to continue 108 or 109, or do you have a particular recommendation of those separate enough, or does it not matter?
Mayor, it's okay to continue all of them, I think we can just take them back up at that point in the-
Then we bring it back before this council, all three, since they are so closely related.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Pastor, do you have a motion on 108 and 109 as a place for continuance?
To continue 108 and 109.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second on the motion to continue 108 and 109, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, item 110 and 112 are related as well, not sure we got to that order, but it is what it is, so now, for items 110 and 112, which are in District 8, in the Vice Mayor's district, the recommended course of action is to hear a staff report on item 110 and 112, hold the public hearing, after the public hearing concludes, we'll see if the Vice Mayor has a motion on 110, and then subsequently 112. Mr. Stevenson, do you have a staff report on 110 and 112?
I do, Mayor members of council, item number 110 and 112 are companion cases, 110 is a general plan amendment for the northeast corner of 24th Street and Vineyard, the companion rezoning case is item 112 for that same area, this particular request for the general plan amendment is to change the general plan land use designation from mixed-use agricultural to residential, crosshatched residential 3.5 and mixed-use agriculture, the South Mountain Village Planning Committee voted to deny this general plan amendment request by a vote of six to five, the Planning Commission did motion to deny as filed and approve the mixed-use agricultural residential two to 3.5 as part of their motion, so you see the aerial now shows the subject site here, here's Vineyard on the south, this is Southern on the north, here's 24th Street, the farm's off this area over here, for many of you that know this particular area. Batteries, can you, thank you, so this shows the general plan designation here, you see the smaller area right here, so this is noted, the Planning Commission recommendation is residential two to 3.5 slash mixed-use agricultural, that's what staff is recommending approval of, this is the proposed site plan, there was a memo that came out two days ago with some revised stipulations and site plan, as the applicant has continued to work with the neighborhood at the direction of the Vice Mayor and try and resolve some of the issues, this proposed site plan drops the density, it addresses some traffic issues and other things as part of getting the three-quarter vote withdrawn from this item, and with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevenson, are there questions by members of this council on items 112, or 110 and/or 112? Okay, we will now open the public hearing on 110 and 112, and I'll take testimony on one or both of those items, the public hearing is now open, I have a few cards wishing to provide testimony before this city council, I do owe each of you who are here to provide testimony, just want to say thank you, it's been a long meeting with a lot of controversial items, a lot of speakers, so thank you for your patience in waiting, Ms. Marsha Bushing, did you wish to provide testimony for this council, followed by Jeff Miller?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you, my name is Marsha Bushing, I am a member of the South Mountain Village Planning Commission, and a 13-member resident of South Mountain, and a 40-year resident of Phoenix, I am here to say that the developer has worked with the neighbors and the community to try and improve this development from what was proposed several months ago, in doing so, we were still negotiating and discussing a couple of stipulations last evening, and hopefully, they will be included as part of any proposed approval, one dealing with the very mature, nice trees along 24th Street, retaining those, and the second one dealing with the commitment by the developer to do flood irrigation on the common areas, but having said that, I want to say that the real concern that I have here is that this was defeated at Village Planning Committee on the general plan amendment vote, and it was defeated because the village itself feels like we should be supporting mixed-use agriculture, it's the only area in the city that has it, it's longstanding, it was, it's the pride and joy of South Mountain, and if we let developer after developer change from the mixed-use agriculture to a more different PUD zoning and other changes, we're just going to lose that heritage that we have there, so while I am neutral on this, as it's gone through the process, I would hope that the Planning Commission in particular would be sensitive to general plan amendments, and that we would get a planning commission that would have the interest of the neighborhood in heart, and not always just be upholding the requests of the developers, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bushing, for your testimony, your service on the Village Planning Committee, Mr. Miller, Jeff Miller?
Thank you, Jeff Miller, 6416 South 26th Street, the proposed development wraps my property on two sides, I'm probably the most directly affected neighbor, I'm also here on behalf of Renz Jennings, who has seven acres directly across the street from this property, and with his approval and proxy to ask you to please approve this development. We are living the agricultural lifestyle of South Mountain, my property is five acres with half of it devoted to wholesale nursery, Mr. Jennings uses part of his property for agricultural, Mr. Samaya, who's got the other five-acre parcel across the street, is a former Christmas tree farm, and all of us would be natural opponents, you would think, to this development coming in, but we have all become vigorous proponents of this development because of the responsiveness of this particular developer to the changes that have been made, and we're especially appreciative to Vice Mayor Gallego for getting involved in this and extracting even further decreases in density to the 3.1 level, taking care of traffic issues that we were concerned about, we have a development now that looks like our area, and that will provide a very nice transition from the high density to the west side of 24th Street, which is a trailer park for the most part, into our area of small farms and agricultural-type uses, the property is now going to be themed in a way that is consistent with South Mountain without being Disney agriculture, which none of us wanted, and this has become a project that, especially after Vice Mayor Gallego got involved, has become something that we can all be strongly supportive of without being afraid of losing our agricultural area or being inconsistent with those uses, so we're very grateful for that and very strongly supportive, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller, Mr. Steve Benton, you're marked as opposed to the item, followed by Lawrence Bailey.
I'm sorry, Mayor, Mr. Miller just wanted to point out where his house is in reference to the zoning case.
Okay, Mr. Morris, I assume you're representing the applicant in the case, Mr. Miller, where do you live?
I am at the lower right corner, I am the green spot at the base of that, right there, I am that five acres that goes across from one side to the other.
Thank you very much, Mr. Benton.
Mayor Stanton and members of the council, my name is Steve Benton, I live on Alta Vista, Alta Vista is one of three streets that connects to 26th Street, Lynn Lane and Nancy Lane are the others, these are all dead-end streets, and we must use 26th Street to enter and exit our property, the concern with the neighbors east of the project is not so much the project itself, but the concern of the traffic and what the traffic will do to our neighborhood. There was a meeting- There was a meeting last Wednesday at South Mountain Community College. That meeting was standing room only, and it was most of the neighbors from that area concerned about the traffic. I do want to compliment Jason Morris, Scott Ward, and their team. Since that meeting, they did make several changes to this project to the benefit of the neighbors to the east. However, there are still some neighbors that would like to go a step beyond. We were told originally, the original plan did not have an entrance or an exit on 26th Street, but that was added later. The hope of the residents there was that, like the Fairways Project, which is near the Legacy Golf Course, they have a major entrance on 24th Street, and there are over 300 homes there that basically use 24th Street to enter and exit their property. Their proposal would be a stipulation, and several of the neighbors wanted me to bring this forward, that the project be approved with a major entrance on 24th Street, just like the Fairways Project does, a few hundred yards to the south, therefore completely protecting the neighbors to the east of this project along 26th Street.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Benton. Any questions for Mr. Benton?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your testimony and your suggestion. You got a question? Councilman Pastore, do you have a question on this item?
Mr. Benton, you can enter on, it's 26th Street and Southern where you enter into that area.
Correct. That's right.
And in that area, how I know that area very well, you can enter, but then if you go all the way south, there's only like one car, and I don't know what that road is, but I take it, that I enter into, and I just go, and it's right by the canal.
Vineyard Road.
Okay, it is Vineyard. Okay. That's what I was trying to figure out.
Vineyard Road to the east of this project is so narrow that if another car comes, I've actually had to back up because two cars could not pass each other.
You are correct.
Yes.
I know exactly where you live. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Benton. Mr. Bailey, Lawrence Bailey?
I came mostly in support of Steve. We're pretty much in agreement on his ideas. I'm really concerned about the traffic, not just for my neighbors, who I care very much about, but for the people who are going to live there in the new development. I don't understand why they can't have more access to 24th Street than having to come in and out right at the corner of Vineyard. If there was an exit to turn right and an entrance where people can only turn right off of 24th Street, it would save a lot of really dangerous traffic at 26th Street and Southern, which is a really bad place to turn left. It's very dangerous. The left-turn lane is shared from traffic coming both directions for a lot of housing that's up in there. There's been a lot of close calls all the time. Vineyard is only a half of a street, and the Salt River Project has a deep ditch there. It's just a drainage ditch and drains from 28th Street all the way across to 24th Street. I don't understand why no one has put pipe in there. I really felt that there should have been, it should have been done when they built the golf course. But it's still an open ditch. It's only for drainage, so it should be easy to pipe in. And it's really quite a hazard for several reasons. One of the reasons is that there's erosion off of that half-street into that ditch, and there are currently, right now, two-foot-deep holes along the very edge of that ditch and eating into the asphalt. And it absolutely destroys the cars that get their wheels stuck down in there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bailey, for your testimony. Appreciate you coming down. Tamela Daniels?
I am a resident of South Phoenix, born and raised, so hoo-hoo for that. I left and came back and don't plan on going anywhere else. I also serve on the South Village Planning Committee, so I'm very familiar not only with the community as a whole, but also what we have tried to do in being, seeing the future of how South Phoenix can grow and also attract different groups of people in socioeconomic and economic development there as well. As the MUA sits on 24th Street, it is one of our, maybe a couple of our last ones, is the largest piece that we can see. However, the community itself is displayed that it's tried to combine both planning and housing with the MUA plan for the second part of it. It's only a portion that's asking to be reduced to allow for a little bit more high density. If you look at the program as a whole or the community as a whole, this serves two purposes. Not only does it have the community garden, which allows for everyone to enjoy that and actually show off our MUA overlay, but also directly across the street on mobile homes. With that, as a realtor in the state of Arizona for 25 years, I can definitely speak from two sides, both being a resident and also from the real estate community. In the residential community, there's no possible way we could actually, a buyer, say a buyer, would buy a $600,000 home that sits directly across from their mobile home, community. Not only would that cause financial hardship on some of the mobile homeowners and the smaller, older homes that sit there, because the tax dollar base would actually increase. And some of those people are already retired, and they couldn't move and transfer financially. But it also gives you two perspectives, that it also attracts professionals, people who are trying to get out of that suburban, urban living that's an hour out, but actually bring them back to the community and actually give them a location that takes them from South Mountain all the way down to downtown, which, you know, we love. As being on the committee for the Village Planning Committee, it was, it was the, you know, kind of declined. Very close call. We had some people who wrote in and in support of it. One person left because the meeting lasted till about, well, when the library kicked us out. So they weren't able to pass their vote or use their vote. It is something that is very dear to our heart, but I think that it should be approved based on the fact that it continues to bring economic development to the community and financial sustain.
Thank you very much, Ms. Daniels, for your testimony and your leadership on the Village Planning Committee. Next speaker is Harry Cuzicron. You should provide testimony on this item. I butchered it. I apologize.
No problem, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council, my name is Larry Cuzicrea. It looks bad because it's got u's and z's in it. I've lived in this area, and I've been the spokesman for the Bartlett Hurd Association for 27 years as its president. We carry and cover a lot of an area. I gave you guys packets. Hopefully you got a chance to see that, so you learn a little bit more about what the Bartlett Hurd is. We try to, we're trying to find a way to really blend this unique area, and it is unique. There's no other place that has people who live there as long as we do. The people that are in the street by where Steve's at, okay? Numbers of them have lived there for 50 years. One of the ladies right across the street has lived there, my God, since 1953, okay? Four generations are living. So what we have here is a very unique area with very unique setups of land parcels. That's the first thing you have to understand. Number two, the entire area is irrigated with SRP water and has been since the very inception of the SRP. If you look back at the county assessors program, it's amazing. The plots, if you look at the land parcels, most of them have only been split once. So what we have here is an area that has a unique feeling to it, and what the BHRA is trying to do is to maintain that. Now, I'm going to try not to talk too long, but I want to deal with these stipulation issues that I've given you all packets about, because it was not able to be handled at the South Mountain Planning, because they voted on the general plan amendment, which wiped out being able to talk about the zoning case. So we couldn't get them attached there. Then we go to planning, and it's the first time in all the years that I've ever been at planning that when we asked for stipulations, that they didn't address them at that point. So they kicked them up to you guys. So that's where we're at today. I gave you some information about that, and that's the reason why I'm here today, asking for three stipulations and two modifications, okay? Very quickly, I want to go over each one of them. The irrigation is the first thing. This parcel, we're in support of, and we're in support of it because it fits. It fits a very unique spot in our area. It's on the west side of the BHRA, and as one of the ladies talked about, it's right across the street from a very old community of trailers that have been there forever. This project will help everybody. It will add value to them. It'll make it look good. It'll add value to us. We can live with it. We have to have some stipulations, though, because there's some unique things that are happening. First stipulation is, the developer has finally come down to a site plan that we've negotiated over the last year that comes up with 11.1 acres of open ground. Guys, 11.1 acres of ground, you cannot water with city, you cannot take care of it with city water. It costs thousands of dollars to the people that are going to move in there. Let's be reasonable. We can keep a little bit of that water down there, and let's use it for irrigating the common ground. There are three acres of what we call givebacks. There's longitudinal park along 24th Street that's going to look great. It's 75 feet deep. It's going to be amenity to everybody. And then, so interior, three acres on the outside, eight acres on the inside, really needs to be irrigated. We're looking for a stipulation that says that the developer will put in an 11-acre water allocation to the homeowners' association, so that the homeowners' association controls it on a single number. They take care of it. They irrigate it. They take care of the whole area, okay? Perfect sense, and it makes sense in our area.
Mr. Cuzicrea, I've given you a little extra time, but it sounds like you've put these requests in writing. Certainly the Vice Mayor has these requests in writing.
Yeah, I gave them to each one of your secretaries personally. So I know that you all have them.
Okay, I appreciate that. So I think she maybe-
And I think I'm going to ask the staff to respond, so I think we're in a good place, but we'll get that on the record. Thank you so much for your continued diligence over the last year.
Oh, no, I understand, but the two issues that we really need to talk about, and we need some direction from the council, are not just the street stipulations about the roadway surfaces and the speed bumps, but we have to talk about the gate entrance on 26th Street, because it's being pushed back by streets to an area that we don't think it should be. It should be pushed as far north as it can be. And I'm speaking for the community people that are down there. I've talked to them directly. I've looked at the situation, and we've been trying to find an answer. City streets believe that it's too close to a corner. Well, the problem is that Lynn Lane is only 100 yards long. It only services the people on one side of the street, and it doesn't meet any of the city standards in the remotest degree. It's been in there forever. So what we want to do is move it as far south as we can.
Mr. Cuzicrea, we appreciate that very, very much. We give each speaker two minutes. I've given you a little, a lot of extra time, but I think you've put these in writing. The Vice Mayor has these in writing, so I think she's going to address them upon the close of the public hearing in her, in her motion.
Okay. I'm hoping that the situation on Vineyard is an issue. I haven't had time to talk at planning or at South Mountain in order to get these on there, or they would have been there, Mayor. And I'm sorry, but they are critical to this area.
I appreciate it. And I think you would indicate you had put them in writing. Councilman DeCiccio, do you have a question for Mr. Cuzicrea?
He's pretty close to finishing. I just, just one last thing, if you could just, I don't mean to be, you know, if you, could I just ask him to finish his last point?
You may, of course. If you have a question for him, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure he gets it out.
The two critical issues, the two critical issues is closing the ditch on Vineyard Road. It is dangerous. I have given the name to Councilman Gallegos to contact Harold at SRP. I had a discussion with him for two hours yesterday, about, not two hours, for about an hour yesterday, with regards to how you close that. And there are some complications, but it can be closed. We have a dedication of 200 tons of dirt from one of the guys, and I could probably get another 1,000 tons to close it if we can close it that way. So we have ways, and we'll try to help. That's the, that's the issue that we need direction from city council on. And the second one is that we absolutely have to have a light at the corner of Vineyard and 24th Street. Under all street analysis that I have done and that anybody else looks at, that is the single busiest corner. Baseline in 24th Street is going to become the single most busy corner in all of South Phoenix because of the fact that traffic cannot head north until it hits 24th Street. 24th Street's the first street that heads all the way up to Missouri. And so consequently, if we don't have a light in there, there's no space gapping for anybody to get out, and it's already a dangerous street. We'll have people killed there, without any question, in the next five years because of the community college and everything else. So I appreciate that, and if we could get the stipulation with regards to 32nd Street, where it says to move that gate as far north as possible, and allowing an exception on this in the states, in the parts of the city, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cuzicrea, for your testimony. I do have the paperwork that, I believe it was you who submitted. These are original, so I'm going to ask our city clerk to make copies of it, so we have for the record, give the originals back to Mr. Cuzicrea. Separate and apart from this zoning case, if it's accurate that he has not had the opportunity to provide substantive testimony at the Village or the Planning Commission, that's, you know, that would be a breakdown of our system, but we should, I don't want to talk about it here today. We should look into that, whether that is accurate, because if it is accurate, that's problematic as we do planning and zoning in the, in the city of Phoenix. Okay. Is there any other individual here wishing to speak on items 110 and/or 112? Going once, going twice? The public hearing is now closed. Vice Mayor?
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you to the many community members who have been working on this for more than a year. It is the most complicated case I think I have had in District 8, and thank you to my Village Planning Commissioners, who sat through a very long meeting and have sat through several long meetings before then to make this a great project. People love this area of Phoenix. It is one of our most special areas. I told the developer, if we had a subdivision here, that we could move anywhere else in Phoenix and it would fit in, that we've missed the idea of how important this district is and how unique it is. So I want to thank many people who helped make this a much better plan. We had a lot of individuals, like Mr. Miller, who've been working on this for more than a year and who started out, I would say firmly opposed, but worked with the developer and others to get a much better project. And we went back and forth several times, and sometimes we'd fix a traffic problem in one area and then create one in another. So huge thank you to our staff for going back and forth. Carrie, thank you for your diligent analysis on this. We have a great traffic engineer here who is going to go to take over traffic safety for the entire state of Arizona. So congratulations, Carrie. I like to think this case built your resume so strongly that you've got a resume, but you've got a great new job, and we will certainly miss you, but thank you for your diligence on this. And I'm, in a second, going to turn it over to you to sort of talk about where we've come from and what is the current plan and what your thoughts are on the comments we've heard today.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And I also want to thank my staff. Several of my team members have done multiple visits to the community, to evening meetings. Several of our South Mountain Village Planning Commission Chair, George Young, has been very, very involved with this, and Zandan, our village planner, has spent hours and hours and was still answering our emails early this morning about stipulations on ditches. So thank you to everyone involved in this. It's a beautiful area, and I think we've come up with a plan that will protect the mature trees in the area, so thank you for the advocates in that area, and reduce some of the difficult traffic problems that we have. But I think at this point, I might turn it over to Carrie to sort of speak about the current status and your recommendation.
Mr. Wilcox?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor, council members, I'm Carrie Wilcox, I'm the Safety Section Lead. Also, I've worked with the, both the neighborhood and the developer on this project through a couple of the meetings that were mentioned here. What we have, we've looked at two concerns, or two primary concerns. One is the entrance and/or exit off of 26th Street and what that might do to the queuing of traffic further to the north on Southern. There is apparently a queue of traffic today as local residents try and get out of the three streets that Steve had mentioned, Lynn, Alta Vista, and Nancy, to get onto Southern. We also looked at possibilities of alternate entrances or exits off of the, either Vineyard or off of 24th Street. What we, what we believe we have now are some workable solutions that may both relieve some of the planned or some of the anticipated congestion on 26th Street and also continue to keep the project safe to both enter and exit. We worked with the developer team and with the neighbors, and what we are looking at on 26th Street is, first of all, a series of speed humps along 26th Street. The developer has agreed to put money in escrow to make the anticipated route, or alternative route, from Southern down to Vineyard on 26th Street less desirable by allowing the residents to approve a series of speed humps. We believe we can fit five to six speed humps in on this segment. We believe we can fit five to six speed humps in on this segment, which we think will adequately discourage any, any new cut-through patterns from developing. As far as the entrance and exit onto 26th Street, it's my understanding the current design calls for an exit, or excuse me, a community entrance only on 26th Street that would, or could be moved as far north as Lynn with some onsite maneuvering, or at least some onsite driveway work. We believe that that would sufficiently relieve most of the concerns that were expressed about traffic on 26th Street. There was also a secondary suggestion that we develop a entrance and exit onto 24th Street to help service the development and possibly relieve some of the need for using 26th Street as an entrance and exit. We believe that, and we've, I've testified to this before in front of the city council, that an entrance to a residential area off of an arterial street is something we don't like to see, and we discourage it wherever possible. However, working with the developer, we have come up with a, a plan that would allow an exit only from the community onto 24th Street, which again, would relieve potentially some of the need or the desire for traffic from the community to use 26th Street as an exit. So we believe that with those two changes, the development is, will be, will be better, while maintaining safety for both the residents who will move into this area and also the residents who currently live there.
Wonderful, thank you. And could our planning director speak a little bit? I had asked you to put in a stipulation about the ditch, and you told me there was a legal reason we could not.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, the ditch is actually an SRP easement area, and they control the ditch and water rights associated with that and where it, where it may go. So we can't legally make the developer do something that, that SRP ultimately controls. If, if you'd like, we can set up a meeting with the applicant and SRP and talk about those issues, but that would be the best that staff could do.
Wonderful. And I think we also looked in at the water issue and using raw water, and the developer is happy to do anything we come up with. The challenge is really between the city, again, and SRP. And thank you to our water department for working us, working with us on a first-time and innovative solution, so appreciate your time on that. But I think we have, in terms of this case before us today, full support of the developer on this particular item.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's my understanding as well.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. So, the public hearing is now closed. We've had those questions answered. Do we have a motion? We need a motion.
And I guess I just had, developer agreed on the stipulation, or to protect the trees, so is that reflected in the vote we are about to take?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm not aware of the, that stipulation. I don't know. Maybe Mr. Morris can enlighten us.
Mr. Morris, you're representing the applicant, I'm assuming?
I am.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. In this instance, the site plan reflects the trees along 24th Street that were referenced by Ms. Bushing will all be saved. That's noted on the site plan, with the exception of a single tree, which is actually being removed in order to further the traffic solution that's preferred by the neighborhood. And we're, we're restricted to that site plan.
Wonderful, thank you. With that, I move approval per the additional backup memo from the Planning and Development Director dated June 29th, 2016, and adopt the related ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second on that? This is on, what, 110 or 112?
Okay.
On 110 now, is that appropriate motion on 110, or should we say that for 112?
Mayor, members of council, for, for 110, it should just be to approve it per the Planning Commission recommendation, adopt the related resolution. The Planning Commission recommendation was the mixed-use ags slash residential 2 to 3.5 dwelling units per acre.
So moved.
All right, so that's the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any additional comments by this council?
What is the zoning currently?
Councilwoman Pastor, you have a question? Please.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, this particular item is just about the general plan. The next item, item 112, the actual zoning for the property, has a mix of some S1 and some higher, a little bit, slightly higher density residential under, I want to say, RE35 zoning, that's a little, a little bit more density.
Okay, so we're just voting on the resolution, and then we'll be voting on the second piece?
Correct, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor. The next one will be the zoning item.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the general plan change. We have a second roll call. DeCiccio.
Noakowski.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Williams.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, that general plan amendment passes unanimously. Now we have 112, which is the underlying, or the zoning on the case. Vice Mayor, you have a motion on 112?
I do, and I apologize, I should have earlier thanked Adam, our village planner, on this issue for his work on this as well, as well as many other people in the community. I'm going to go back to my motion that I made the first time and see if, now that we're on 112. Motion to approve per the additional backup memo from the Planning and Development Director dated June 29th, 2016, and adopt the related ordinance.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second on the motion on zoning. Any comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call. DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor.
I'm sorry, no.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams. Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Oh, yes, that amendment passes on an eight-to-one vote before this city council. Next item on the agenda is item number 111. 111 involves the southeast corner of 28th Street and, sorry, Calhoun Back Road.
Mayor, and may, oh, go ahead, sir.
Councilman DeCiccio.
And this is more of a request to the neighbors that are here today. Do you want Allison, oh, would you, do you want a staff presentation on this, because they described the project, or would you rather just give your presentation? It's your call.
Well, I'm pretty familiar. It's up to the rest, it's up, if the answer is you want a presentation, we'll do that.
There you go.
Okay, no, no, I appreciate that very much. So I think, in terms of proceeding with item number 111, we'll, we'll hear a short staff report on the item, then we'll open up the public hearing. If representatives of the neighborhood did want to go a little longer than two minutes, or people wanted to donate time to a leader of the area, that's perfectly appropriate, and we'll accept that and have an opportunity to go a little longer in that regard. If not, everybody, you know, each, each person who's here who wants to provide testimony is certainly able to. So now we're on item number 112, excuse me, 111, I apologize. Southeast corner, 28th Street and Calhoun Back Road. I'll turn it now to our planning director. What is being proposed as a zoning change for this corner?
Mayor, members of council, this is a request to go from CO zoning and P1 zoning to a PUD for a hotel and office use. You see the area in crosshatch is the subject site. The surrounding zoning is commercial largely along the Calhoun Back Road corridor front edge, and then single-family residential back into the south of the site. Here's an aerial to show the context for you. There is, you know, additional building height within this area for several different projects, some of which are already built, that are, you know, a mix of three and to five stories in this area, going up to some zoning height entitlements that would allow 165 feet on the corner. In this particular, shows the site plan with a hotel use on this side over here, and then a office use on this side here. This request does come before you with a request of approval from the Planning Commission, as well as the Calhoun Back East Village Planning Committee. Councilman DeCiccio and the neighbors and the applicant have continued to meet since the Planning Commission to work on some additional stipulations. Those stipulations came out in a memo earlier this morning, and staff is recommending approval per the stipulations in that memo. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much for that presentation. Should be noted that this is a three-quarter vote case, so it'll take seven members of the city council to vote in the affirmative in order to make the zoning change requested. Okay, so that is the staff report. Any questions for Mr. Stevenson on this proposal? Okay, I will now open up the public hearing on item number 111. Public hearing is now open. Councilman DeCiccio, I don't know if you have a preference about whether representatives of the, of the neighborhood go first, or Mr. Gilbert, representing the applicant, go first?
I'd like to leave that up to the neighborhood. What would you prefer?
Want to go first or second?
Want to go first or second?
Miss?
Okay, Mr. Gilbert.
I prefer Mr. Gilbert.
All right, Mr. Gilbert, go first. Obviously, if, if, if there are specific issues that are brought up that you would like to respond to, we'll give you that opportunity. And to the neighborhoods, we'll give you the same opportunity. We want to get all of the issues out on the table, so we have them before the city council, before this, for this vote. Mr. Gilbert, you did, you did request to go first on the agenda here today.
Yes, thank you for-
Instead, we are last. I apologize, but we have a lot of important business before the city council.
Yeah.
Mr. Gilbert, the floor is yours.
I, I know my place, I'm last, as usual, so here I am. I'm a little concerned, since this is a three-quarter vote and we're missing one city council person, is she planning on attending?
She is in the back. I think she's working with the neighborhood on the previous case.
And I'm, I'm sure she's dutifully listening, that's good, all right. For your record, my name is Paul Gilbert, 701 North 44th Street. I have a very lengthy presentation, but in the naïve and fervent hope that my brevity will be rewarded, I'm going to cut that down substantially. And Mayor will devote my time to rebuttal if it's necessary, if that's okay. All right. I think it's important, as we reason together on this case, that we focus on the fact that every single reviewing body that's heard this case has recommended approval. Staff is in support, the village is in support with a strong recommendation of approval, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve it. We started out with staff suggesting seven stipulations. We are now at north of 30 stipulations. Unlike, or like the previous case, we have made a plethora of changes to this proposal. I think the developer has bent over backwards to try to accommodate the neighbors' requests. Reciprocally, I think the neighbors have been very gracious and have worked with us to try to get this worked out, and we are appreciative of that. But it is worked out, as far as we know. So we have a case that is before you that has 30 stipulations. I'm not going to spend time going through each one of them, but let me just tell you, it's a total package. There's been give and take, and it's important that this be approved as per the staff stipulations, because it all fits together, and the give and take requires that the whole package be approved. This property is the subject matter of a general plan designation for commercial. There's been a specific finding by your staff that this property is zoned for, or excuse me, general planned for commercial. The project that we are proposing with the office building and the hotel are consistent with that designation. The site plan that is before you, thank you, Dennis, the site plan that is before you has been very, very carefully crafted to protect the neighborhood. The setback between the south end of the buildings and the neighborhood is 118 feet. The majority of the parking is below grade. The developer has committed that we will not use 29th Street as any access point. All access will be limited to 28th Street and access off of Calhoun Back. We have broken up the two buildings. Dennis, if you could switch to the current, that's, there we go. This shows the current buildings that are on the property. You will notice they're not broken up, they're massed altogether. We, and they are much closer to the neighborhood than we're proposing, albeit we are proposing four and five stories. Now, Dennis, go back to the site plan where we show the landscaping plan and the, thank you. Between the two buildings, we have a very large plaza, an open space. This gives you a feel for what it looks like. The open space between the buildings will create a view corridor, it will break up the buildings, and yet maintain that large setback. We've agreed to certain stipulations with regard to landscaping. We are doing profuse amount of landscaping along Calhoun Back Road, providing shade there. We've moved the buildings forward, so they're right against Calhoun Back Road to facilitate the urban feel for this project. We continue to work with the neighborhood on the landscaping. There are several traffic mitigation stipulations. Let me just briefly summarize. I can tell I'm losing your attention, it's been a long day, for me too, by the way. But we are providing a sum of $45,000. That $45,000 can be used pursuant to the stipulations that staff worked out with us and with the help of Councilman DeCiccio and the neighbors, can be worked out to provide all kinds of traffic mitigation, neighborhood markers, and that $45,000 will basically be spent, although it's outlined in the stipulations as to what it could be spent for, but it will be spent primarily for items outlined in the stipulations as determined basically by the neighborhood. Now, I could spend a lot of time going through these stipulations. I'm not going to do so, but we are prepared to review them. They really protect the neighborhood, and compromise is the name of the game here, and we have done it, the neighbors have done it, and I think it's a very, very good end result. So, in closing, we're here with a recommendation of approval from every single recommending body. It's consistent with the general plan. Staff has made specific findings along that line, and we hope that you would concur and vote for this case, reminding you that we have a three-quarter vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gilbert. Any questions for Mr. Gilbert at this time? Okay, the next speaker will be Timothy Rinalter. Timothy, do you wish to provide testimony on this item you've marked in, in favor? And then we'll hear from Ms. Distrofino, and you've had many people donate time. Do you still have as much time as you need? Please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Tim Rinalter. I have lived at 2902 East Mariposa for over 20 years. We built the house when it was a vacant lot, at the corner of 29th Street and East Mariposa, and we love our neighborhood as it is. If I had the perfect world, we wouldn't make any changes whatsoever to the neighborhood, but that's not reality. My first meeting with Jeff Lepore was on April 30th, 2015. He met with me and Allison Distrofino, who is a good neighbor and will speak in opposition to this project, on the morning of April 30th, right between my driveway and the property. And Allison came right across the street. He shared with us what plans he had at the time and sort of his vision for the, for the project. And I have to say that since that time, he, what he was proposing kind of scared me. And so, I mean, through a lot of discussions, he has come down on a lot of things, and as Mr. Gilbert said. In January and March of this year, my wife and I attended two neighborhood meetings at the Biltmore and Busy Suites. We also had some members there of the neighborhood. Most people did not attend either meeting. We found both of those meetings to be helpful, informative, as we began to form our opinions and our decisions about the project. More recent meetings that I attended, the East Village Planning Committee in May, the City of Phoenix Planning Commission in this building on June 2nd. Neighbors and I, that is Allison and another neighbor, met with the Alan Stevenson, who's here, Sarah Hoffman, on June 21st at City Hall. A neighborhood meeting was held with Carrie Wilkinson and Vanessa Salinas at Distrofino's home. It was to review all sorts of traffic topics. And this week's meetings included two hours with Sal and his team, as well as Dennis Lepore and Dennis, Dennis Newman, Jeff Lepore, excuse me, and Dennis Newman. And- And a lot of it really stems now with the stipulations document that is getting drafted, redrafted. It's changed color, size, and direction. But the bottom line is that our decision to formally support the project is really based on a couple of things. The current building that's there right now in that site is a dump. It really is, and it's quickly falling into blight, has been for years, and only takes away from the area. People have said to me in the neighborhood, you know, we live on Rodeo Drive of Phoenix, and I said, "Well, I've waited twenty years for somebody to come along and build the Rodeo Drive at my corner, and no one has come by." While we'd all love to have a two- or three-story building, that's not reality, and I understand that in order for somebody to come in, raise that building, build something new, you need more than two stories in this day and age in order to get a return on your investment. Our interactions, that is my wife and myself, our interactions with Jeff Lepore and his team have always been professional and informative, and he has consistently demonstrated a willingness to work with us and our neighbors, as evidenced by the stipulations document that I think has probably been distributed to all of you at this point.
Mr. Rinalter, I mean, we've gone a little over the...
Okay.
...two-limit time, but I wanted to get to the board case.
That's basically it.
But you're supportive of the case with the initial stipulation.
I am in support of it, yes, I am.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next speaker will be Allison Disarafino, and you have many people who have donated time. I let Mr. Gilbert and Mr. Rinalter go over, so essentially...
I can keep you here until dinner.
As much time as you need within reason. How's that?
I want to go on vacation, so...
All right.
I will be short and to the point, and I do, again, thank my neighborhood for asking me to speak for them, despite the fact that you've had two commissions that, you know, our Village Planning Committee and the Planning Commission pass this on and make it look like it was something that everyone was in agreement with. If you look closer into it, you will see there was a lot of neighborhood opposition. There are really three things that are of a great concern to us. We do feel the dinner plan is being misapplied here. We also believe our specific plan is being ignored. We do have a Camelback East Village specific plan, which you did see in one of those pictures, how it's zoned. And also that we are seeing a danger of a new precedent being set by this type of a PUD coming in and rezoning this area. When I sat down to think about how I wanted to approach you, a saying came to my mind that my mother-in-law said since I had her as a home ec. teacher, is to begin with the end in mind. I find it ironic that we are the end of your day, but I would ask you to think back to even the very beginning of this day, and how important decisions you are making affect the lives of the people that are here. We represent a group that is in somewhat disagreement with another group, that being residents and developer. We both want different ends, and yet the common theme we both want is development. No one in our neighborhood would like it to stay a rundown, one-story building. We would like to see development. Mr. Lepore has been very agreeable. Despite our opposition from day one to the hotel being a part of this PUD, he has continued to work with us in a very approachable and professional manner, even though we have not wavered on that aspect. That said, though, we are standing for you today to ask you to think about the long-term, the end plan of this general plan, because, as you know, you adopted that general plan, but even more importantly, over 76% of the voters that voted last August to approve it also told you, "We want this plan to be in effect." The general plan tells us that the moving-forward portion or the implementation portion is meant to provide a citywide vision and strategy for how the city will continue to grow and develop. That general plan will become a very powerful medium for residents to strategize how their community will develop, when they work in conjunction with these planning-commissioning meetings, the city staff, which has been very available to us, and ultimately, working with you. Initially, I have to say, as I started to work on this process of figuring out how we could initially stop this, I was a little intimidated by the fact that I don't have the deep pockets to hire a very talented law firm, planners, and advocates. And yet, I realize, as I stand before you today, I have better than a law firm. I have voted you into office. I have my City Council. Having a City Council that is going to uphold a general plan that I also voted in favor for means that I have advocates that actually care about our area's specific plan. You care about the vision and strategy that our neighborhood has put together. Now, I acknowledge that plan was last updated in 2006, but as you may or may not be aware, the general plan has laid out for when the different villages are to update their plan. We are due to update ours this fall. It hasn't happened yet, but we will update it. Yet, I feel, again, a precedent is being set to change the land use, future encroachment being encouraged, and a circumvention of what is already established underlying zoning. The big difference I see between a general plan and a specific plan is the general plan gives you umbrellas. Yes, this is commercial. There's commercial everywhere. There's residential, there's industrial, but that underlying zoning is where the true interpretation needs to lie of what's an appropriate use in an area. I'm going to ask you not to compromise our individual character and the unique assets of the Camelback East Village Plan. We are not agricultural, like District 8's area, but we are a unique area, and we also are one of the few villages that has actually developed according to the core center and corridor model that this city has said they're aiming for. We've balanced housing and employment, and we more than welcome Class A office space coming in. That was one of the pro votes at the Planning Commission, as this great need has been explained for Class A office. We say, "We want it. Bring it here." We have also concentrated the intensity and uses into our core. It was mentioned that there's five-story buildings. They are down at 24th Street, 26th Street, 28th Street, which is just to the west of this, is a two-story building. We have two- and three-story buildings around us. So, putting in what is proposed there is going to be sticking out like a sore thumb. A bigger concern is actually, though, how it is going to affect future development along the corridor, away from, right now, what is supposed to be a transition from high height down out to a very protective, lower-use zone for residents. We are not the only residential area that comes up next to the Camelback Road. We've also been very successful in promoting the unique character of our area. Mr. Lepore has a here-to, and argued, I would say, has actually elevated some of the design standards that are in our specific plan, and we are grateful for that. But I would just ask again for caution, starting from the top down, because you are the ones that appoint these Village Planning Committee members, that when maximum height, when they're trying to always push the limit, that there would be some more pushback and real justification for it. In the end, our general plan is going to be evaluated on how well it helps enhance the quality of life for its residents. So, I would ask us to reach that end together by beginning to pay particular attention to our land use map. The general plan tells us that any changes that come to the land use map need to be done in collaboration between those commissions, the residents, and business owners. Underlying zoning truly does matter, because it will protect and enhance our neighborhoods, gives us a consistent and compatible use, and economic stability. I do think PUDs are a very valuable tool. I am thankful to gentlemen like most dying who have explained to me why they are useful, but I don't think they were intended to drive land use change, and I feel like that's what we are seeing happen in many cases. I want us to be very careful to not shape our village or other villages' vision and strategy by going through this type of a process again. Please, think about what you are voting on when you approve these projects. I want to know if you have really considered, is it making our general plan work? Ask yourself, "If I begin in this way today, what will the end result be?" Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Disarafino, for that strong testimony. You had six individuals also opposed to the particular proposal, supporting you. There are two additional cards, not wishing to speak but oppose, Mr. Paul Barnes and Ms. Karen Beckbar. Good to see you. Not wishing to speak but opposed to the proposal. Mr. James Dibler, did you wish to provide testimony on this item?
Yes.
Okay, please come forward. You have up to two minutes to provide testimony. This is on item 111.
Okay. Hello, I am James Dibler. I lived in Phoenix, Arizona, and councilman Donald Vangraria, District 5. I agree with the neighbors and Phoenix Councilman Sal DiCecio that developers should work with the neighbors to find the solution to lower the height of the building. Last year, Glendale City Council rejected billboards on Luke 101 Freeway and near Arrowhead Town Center. That Glendale City Council put restrictions on highlights, buildings near Arrowhead and nearby neighborhoods. Phoenix should put restrictions on buildings near the Biltmore Fashion Park Shopping Center. Thanks for no time in consideration.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Dibler. While we're still in the hearing, I want to turn to Councilmembers, if they have any questions for any of the speakers representing the applicant or Ms. Disarafino or any other neighbors. Are there any questions for members? Ms. Stark, Councilwoman Stark, I apologize. Councilwoman Stark.
Actually, I think it's for staff more.
Please.
If you could just talk a little bit about how this core plan of Camelback East fits into the newly adopted general plan.
So, Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, the general plan is an overall policy document, as you all know, that was voted on by the voters and approved last fall, correctly noted by 76% of the voters. The subset of all of the general plan is specific plans or neighborhood area plans. In this case, there is a specific plan for the Camelback East area, which goes from the 28th Street over to the east to basically the 51 Freeway, just the parcel on the other side of that includes that whole area, where you see a lot of the height intensity within that Camelback corridor. It is, you know, an area of intensity for the village and has been for a number of years and will continue to be, you know, as these other projects come in. In this particular case, the site has CO zoning that was zoned prior to the current CO ordinance and the way it reads, and so, the site allows four stories of 56 feet of building height. So, even though it's not within the core specific plan area, the existing height of the zoning that's there allows for some of that more intensity, and that was one of the key reasons why staff was supportive of this particular item, even though it's just outside of the core specific plan. I would note for the record that when the applicant initially came in to talk to staff, the request was for 68 feet of height, and staff wouldn't support that because of the specific plan. We said, "You're outside of the specific plan. The core gradient goes down to 56 feet across the street on that." We couldn't support higher height because of that specific plan. So, we did use it in that instance to help us with the staff recommendation.
Councilwoman, any other additional questions? All right, so I'm looking, Councilwoman DiCecio, questions for, I guess, either staff or any of the speakers, please.
Well, I was just going to put a motion on the table.
I got to close the public hearing first.
Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
Is there any other comments? Anybody else wish to testify on item number 111? Mr. Gilbert, do you have anything specifically you wanted to...
I do, and very, very quick.
As briefly as possible.
Very, very quickly. We seem to be laboring with this point, and it's come up at the Planning Commission. It came up ad nauseam at the village. Do we comply with the general plan? We do. The neighbors keep claiming we don't. The staff has made a specific finding, the village made a specific finding, the Planning Commission did. We comply with the general plan. Secondly, we may not comply with the Camelback specific plan, but we took a lot of the elements of the Camelback specific plan, and we incorporated them in our stipulations, even though we're not part of it. So, we get accused of not complying with the Camelback specific plan, or the city not complying with the Camelback specific plan. We're not part of it. It ends at 28th Street. But even given that, we are complying with the, far and away, the majority of those provisions. I also want to emphasize that we are in what's core, you've adopted a plan called the Camelback Employment Corridor Plan. We fit right there, and the uses we're proposing fit right with it. So, these comments about cities not interpreting their plan, or cities not following their plan, that is absolutely, I have to say it like it is, not correct. We are following the plan. This case follows the plan. Let me just say in conclusion, and I hope I won't get quoted on this the next time I appear before them, but the East Camelback Village Committee is the toughest committee we appear before, and we went through these issues ad nauseam, in my view, for in excess of three hours. We talked about all these things. We talked about the plans, and you have before you today a recommendation, strong recommendation, from the East Camelback Village recommending you support this plan. So, for these reasons, we think we've presented a high-quality plan. Last comment, of the 30 stipulations, probably 27 of them are new that we didn't start with and are designed specifically to protect the neighborhood. Time won't permit me going through all of them, but they're as long as my arm, and they give terrific protections to the neighborhood, much more than most CO cases, and much more than the extant zoning on the property now. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Gilbert. I guess that was an open invitation to the other villages to be tougher on Mr. Gilbert in his future cases, so that they can regain their number-one status, Levine and elsewhere. All right, Ms. Disarafino, I want to give you a full and fair opportunity. I don't want to mischaracterize. I think what the staff is trying to say is that, on the height issue, they believe that the height that is proposed is legally allowed under the existing general plan and zoning. I think I want to be fair to the interpretation, Ms. Disarafino, and the neighbors, and many of the neighbors, which is, they're saying, suggesting that the spirit of the core specific plan may not be followed, and so that we have a judgment that we have to make as members of this council on that issue. Again, I want to make sure both sides, I want to fairly characterize the arguments of both sides, but Ms. Disarafino, if you, I wanted to give you a chance.
Can I speak for Mayor?
You have to go to the mic, because you are on television, for the folks watching at home.
Okay, yes, exactly. It is, there is the letter of the law and the spirit of the law, and we feel the spirit of what is actually viable, like he said, it is this economic corridor, we are thriving, has worked, again, with that core in descending. We acknowledge, yes, I looked up the zoning, it is allowed to 56, and I would just point out that we have not argued about the business. It's been about the intensity of use change, which is not in our specific plan for that area.
Thank you so very much. Okay, so is there anyone else here wishing to testify on item number 111? Going once, going twice? The public hearing is now closed. Councilman DiCecio, I'll now turn it over to you to see if there is a motion.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And before I do that, I do want to thank Alan, Sandra, Carrie, for all the work that you've put into this. I mean, it's just been outstanding, the amount of work you've put into. Vanessa in my office, to the neighborhood, who, I can't even tell you how many meetings you've had on this. It's just been relentless, and the amount of work that you put into it, it just shows the character of the neighborhood and how much you want to protect your own neighborhood, and want to make sure your quality of life stays up. I mean, really, that's what this is about. I want to thank Mr. Gilbert, Mr. Lepore, for the amount of work that you've put into this. I know it's been extensive, and Mr. Gilbert, and even staff, will tell you that whenever you do work in my district, you do get a lot of stipulations, and it's only because of clarity. It just is what it is. I mean, I just want to always make sure that when we walk out of this room, that you always have clarity, and we went even down to the clarity of the type of lighting. A lot of these stipulations, we had some significant stipulation changes as of 6 o'clock last night. So, it just shows how hard people have worked to put this thing together. I really want to thank everybody for all the work that you've put into this. I know it hasn't been easy. It's been very difficult, as it should be. It should not have been easy. Anytime you're coming in with a change, those things should always be difficult. They should be something that they're carefully thought out, hence the 30 or more stipulations that we have together. You start to lose track on that. But no, I do want to give the thanks. Vanessa has been just amazing. I mean, she's only 23 years old or 24. I don't even know how old you are anymore, but...
They don't give their ages out.
Yeah, they don't give their ages out. I'm not supposed to. I'm the politically incorrect guy, remember that, even in the office. But at the end of the day, it's the amount of work that they put into. The $45,000 was problematic yesterday, because we wanted to make sure that those dollars were used in the right place, and I think we came to a very good conclusion on that, even the screening of the lights and the type of lighting we've gotten into, and the type of LED. I mean, that all came down to, a lot of these decisions were being made later in this... I mean, that all came down to, a lot of these decisions were being made later in this process, as they should be, because as you go through things, you've got to be able to find out and see if there's more issues out there. Again, I want to give everyone a lot of thanks. You know, you just really worked hard. I mean, Mr. Gilbert was calling me late last night, and I know I didn't return a couple of his calls, but, you know, I wanted to make sure we had everything squared away first, before I got back with people, and I do want to thank the work that all of you have put into this thing. Allison, you know, a lot of the things that she talked about, and I do want to drill this home, and this is not just about this case, it's also about the future cases. Alan, you know how many requests we get out there on a regular basis? A lot of it's apartments. I mean, it's just relentless, the amount of calls that we get on this thing, and if you look at it, the other reason that we want to bring clarity, and we have these types of stipulations that we did when we put this together, was the fact that we're not just deciding on this case here, but we're deciding on future cases as they're moving forward in the district, and the type of consistency that I think not only the development community should see, but also the type of consistency the neighborhood should see, and what they should expect from their government. So from my end, I'm going to be making a motion to approve this, and my motion's going to be the motion to approve Z 7015-6 for the additional backup memo, the extensive backup memo, from the Planning and Development Director dated July 1, 2016, and adopt the related resolution. I want to make sure I have that down correct. Is that correct?
Was that a correct motion, Ms. Sheen?
If he does that, that means I don't.
Mayor, Councilman DiCio, it's just the related ordinance in this case.
Oh, and the related ordinance. Oh, resolution, okay, related ordinance, okay. All right, that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Are there any additional comments or questions by members of this council? Councilwoman Stark. Did you have a comment? I apologize.
No.
No additional comments, I'm sorry. Any additional comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call. DiCio.
Yeah.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayors Stanton.
Yes, that motion passes unanimously. Next on our agenda are, there is a few more citizens wishing to provide citizen comments before this city council, so I'll move on to those citizen comments. That'll be the last portions of this agenda. We have to have a quorum present to continue to hear the citizen comments. Mr. Kevin Giles, are you present?
Yes, sir.
Please, please come forward and provide up to three minutes of comments before the city council. Good to see you.
I'd be honored to.
Go ahead.
Greetings, dear citizens of the great city of Phoenix, Arizona, coming all the way from the state of California, and a native-born Californian, and loyal citizen of the United States of America, it's truly my honor to address you all.
Thank you.
With an issue that I believe is more pertinent to the well-being of the citizens of this city hall and this city as well. As I was visiting Phoenix today, I ventured across the courtyard just outside this city hall building.
Yes.
And I must say that I am impressed with the landscaping and the overall improvements that have been made across Phoenix and across the greater state of Arizona. I remember coming here and visiting as a boy, and it was not the same. You guys have really done a great job in and around the greater Phoenix area, building up what's going to be one of America's next greatest metropolises, really, the metropolis of the Southwest. I believe that is the vision that Phoenix can adopt and maintain as it continues to improve and strive for excellence. And one of the things that I noticed today was that there was a bit of a deficiency in and around this area, where there's a lot of the foot traffic. I was blessed with the opportunity to visit the police museum adjacent to here, and share some of the stories about my experiences in life. Coming from California, I've been victimized, you might say, by many instances of police injustice, why, just this last week, I was placed under false arrest for the second time, and it has to do with some very high-level mafia connections, Italian mafia connections that are in my family, that I have nothing to do with. And it also has to do with some very high-level central intelligence agency slash executive office connections. I have a family member that goes back to the White House with the Kennedy administration, Nixon administration, and I was just chatting with DeeDee up here, we were talking also about Ronald Reagan and his administration, she's from Simi Valley. So my family has some extremely high-level connections, and I've come a long way in life. I've walked down a lot of roads, and I must say that Phoenix's roads are a bit dry, and when I say dry, I mean lacking in some of the essential commodities that could save lives. As you may know, there are very few water fountains anywhere around here in the downtown Phoenix area that could save a life. You know, there's a lot of foot traffic. You gentlemen coming in and out of here, a lot of police officers, and men and women who really know what's right. They have great wisdom, they've been on the streets, and they've been in high towers, and they've been everywhere in between, and the lack of drinking fountains in this proximal area, I must say, is sorely disappointing. I believe that in the summer, approaching now, as we're moving into the first day of July, and happy 4th of July to you all, ahead of time, there's a deficiency of drinking fountains, and so I wish you guys would do more, and also, there should be more payphones, too.
Thank you very much, Mr. Giles, for the testimony. We're glad you're here. Ms. Joanne Scott Woods, you're the next speaker on citizen comments, followed by Mr. Dibler.
There's a handout that goes with this. This past Wednesday, at a voting rights forum hosted by Ruben Gallego and Ann-Ker Patrick, they announced that they would be working with Phoenix on adopting mail-in ballots only. The forum this coming Tuesday, entitled Arizona Communities for Change Part II, Changes That Give Everyone the Right to Vote, on July 5, which is cosponsored by the Somos America Coalition and the People Demanding Action Community Coalition, will be exploring that option, as well as others, led by John Roberts Brekey, who will be examining in more depth and offering unique remedies through the research of best practices for reforming the voting process than was possible at Wednesday's forum. As a national election integrity expert with 12 years of experience, Mr. Brekey, co-founder of Audit Arizona, filed a lawsuit against Secretary of State Reagan. Also speaking at this forum will be Samantha Patross of the Arizona Advocacy Network, a nonprofit for voting rights. She and two others are currently reaching out individually for change with Helen Purcell and Michelle Reagan on the newly-formed Commission for Election Accountability. Mr. Brekey will be updating us all with his observations and those of other national experts on the June 7 California presidential primary, which shares similarities with Arizona's. Ms. Patross will be updating us on the progress of the commission as well. Senator Martine Quezada will be a panelist in sharing the status of needed legislation to protect voting rights. Your attendance at this Arizona Communities for Change public forum would be highly valued for a prosperous dialogue, and is a vital educational opportunity for all who participate as a panelist and as an audience member committed to changes that give everyone the right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Woods. Mr. Dibler, you are the final speaker.
Hello, I am James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona, and Councilmember Donald Vangreia, District 5. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to serve for commission on this disability issue. I would do a good job on serving the citizens of Phoenix on meeting the needs of persons with disability. I used to go to school at Glendale Community College, Metro Tech, and Holiday Park Elementary School. I know Ms. Lee used to be principal at Holiday Park Elementary School. My friend Gerald Haley helped me to make it through college at GCC. He's currently a president of exceptional students club at GCC. Next year, I would like to see Phoenix and Glendale to get an All-American City Award for the best-run city government. I'm glad that Phoenix City Council passed the municipal ID program. Thanks for your time.
Mr. Dibler, thank you very much for providing that testimony. Is anyone else here wishing to speak on citizen comment before the city council? Going once, going twice? This meeting is now, everyone have a safe, healthy, hopefully cool 4th of July. The meeting is now adjourned.